Yeah.
And I said, yeah.
It's out.
She's like, what can I do?
For a lot of the.
But, yeah.
Cause everybody, I mean.
Yeah, a lot of them.
This woman's speaking.
I'm like.
A lot of the kids have heard about this. They're playing with the same. I don't know what they're not seeing. But it seems to me. That's a useful way to be. I just wanted to. Down and wrong. Or she's.
So. Just some. Designing. Which is all. We're just.
Cause they. I didn't realize how.
It's like one.
Yeah, we need like, we wasn't.
Yep.
I'd say huh. Cause I.
You know. If you get out of house or something. So. There it is.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
It's huge.
A little bit.
Yeah.
One of the cameras.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And he's.
Well.
Now. Now.
Which is a good. Sure. It was a pretty. Yeah. And that's like. I'm. I'm.
Still got an opportunity for that.
How many you hope that's. Big. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
Con is not here.
Oh, it's good.
Training. Salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Dakota.
Here.
Mr. Dillon.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Mr. Howe.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
I need acceptance of the minutes, so I need a motion to approve the minutes. Meeting minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting of the Lowell School Committee on June 17, 2020. Special meeting of minutes on June 25, 2020, June 29, July 1, and July 9, 2020. Need a motion to place them on file by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All those in favor? Permission to enter, Superintendent Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation would be approval as written, with the exception of the last item on your previously released agenda related to transportation. We have a special meeting tomorrow to discuss that item. So, Mr. Mayor, I would kindly ask for a motion that, for approval, to approve all but that one item on the PTE.
Okay. How do you want to word that, Mayor? Dataco?
Yeah.
Prove the permission to enter with the exception of dataco. Any questions? So, motion approved by Mr. Howe, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Mr. Dillon.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Into the motions. First motion of the night by Ms. Clark. Mandate school committee members participate in anti-racism, unconscious attitudes, and implicit bias training provided by the district level administrators. Seconded by. Miss Dougherty, Ms. Clark.
So I think the motion.
We have some speakers too.
We have some speakers.
Yeah, okay, so you want them to go first?
Yep, sure, thank you.
All right.
Like, you want me to read their name and then you have to come forward?
If any committee members haven't met, Mr. Hoppy Mike is one of our technology specialists in the district.
Hello?
Monica Lundberg.
Hello?
Monica.
Hi Monica, you're all set to speak?
On Ms. Clark's motion.
Monica, you're on air, you signed on to speak to the motion for the school committee meeting?
I'm sorry, it's really echoey, I can't hear you.
Hello?
Cause it's not projecting in here either, you know what I mean?
Even on the microphone?
So I don't know if they can't hear us, right?
Hey Monica, how you doing, it's Dr. Boyd.
Oh, hi, Dr. Boyd.
Hey, how are you doing? You're, can you hold for just a second? We're having a little bit of a technical difficulty, but you're on the line for the school committee to speak to Hillary's motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? Yes, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, yes, I did.
If you don't mind, I don't know what, yeah.
Delay on my computer.
Yeah, and there's a little bit of technical difficulty here, so feel free to begin when you want. The mayor is, has given you the signal.
Okay, thank you. No, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Sure, you can speak.
Did you hear the mayor just then?
Okay, okay, I figured out what's going on, there's like a solid two-minute delay between the video feed that I'm watching. So, should I just start speaking then?
Yes. Yep.
Please feel free, Monica.
All right, so I just wanted to, to call in and speak in strong favor of the motion. I think that it is absolutely critical right now that our schools, that everyone involved in decision-making in our schools has training in anti-racism and implicit bias. We have such a diverse student body, but that diversity is not reflected in our leadership. And one of the ways that we can, we can address it, we have to make sure that there are people who are in leadership while we're working on expanding the diversity of our leadership. Making sure that the people in our, in our leadership are, are educated and are understanding of the ways that white supremacy works insidiously. I've had the benefit of anti-bias and anti-racism training myself through a few different organizations that I'm involved in, and I cannot speak highly of it enough. You don't know what you don't know. And it was really eye-opening for me as an individual to see how much I have internalized of the culture of white supremacy that we live in. So I just wanted to, to really speak strongly in favor of getting that training, because I, I see how this stuff comes out in the schools. And one of the best ways that we can can start to change our systems is by getting the kids when they're young, but we can't teach them what we don't know. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
I think he's gonna dial them.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Abraham.
Speak to me.
Hi, it's Dr. Boyd. We have you on as the next speaker for the school committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
We have a little bit, we have a little bit of technical difficulty, so I think you're getting a little bit of delay on what you're watching. But if you turn that down now, the mayor can introduce you and we can hear your item to speak for Ms. Clark's motion.
Okay.
Please state your name and the address for the record.
So your name and address for the record?
Uh, Lowell River Hand, 7 King Bean Drive, Lowell, Mass.
All right, the committee's ready to hear your remarks.
Great, good evening, school committee members, my name is Lowell Abraham, and I'm a resident of Lowell, Mass. I'm also the executive director of Kids in Tech. Kids in Tech is a local nonprofit that strives to educate, excite, and empower kids to acquire the skills and confidence in technology through interactive after-school programs in partnership with community agencies around the city. You might ask why a former middle school teacher who now leads a nonprofit locally should care about anti-bias, anti-racism training for teachers, school administration, and school committee members alike. I believe that education is the most valuable tool to create a, to create a just and equitable society. Furthermore, education spaces like schools play significant role in that, as well as educators and other stakeholders who inhabit such spaces. Furthermore, what happens, what is learned in school affects what happens after school and vice versa. It also requires that all school leadership undergo training as one of the main vehicles. No one is perfect, however, in spite of our imperfections, we must strive and push towards excellence for the sake of our kids, our future community leaders. All this in service to what many call the American project of, in part, forming a more perfect union, and in this particular place, a more perfect education system. I also believe that to begin the work of forming a more perfect education system, it requires the implementation of effective anti-bias teachings, trainings, and policies. But it also requires that teachers and administrations are given the long-term sustainable support towards this endeavor too. The ultimate proof of ROI for training efficacy must come from the measures organizations obtain within their own cultures. That is to find whether your approach works, one should look for evidence that it works and be open to implementing new approaches and techniques as organizations seek to improve its own practice. I also urge you to continuously seek input from all stakeholders, parents, students, existing teachers, new teachers, and so forth. Furthermore, as elected officials, administrative training is one of the many, many vehicles to do so, but it should not be the own step. Closely related to the topic, as a former middle school teacher and being a black woman, I've seen the positive impact of my presence for students of color and non-students of color alike. Many research studies and data backs up these claims, these claims to. I hope that the district is also working toward establishing long-term sustainable practices to recruit more teachers of color and ensure that they can flourish as public educators in our community. And seeking communities and putting guidance around such issues. All of our kids will benefit in the larger community too. These are longstanding issues that need urgent solutions. It also needs to be total transformation versus reform. Thank you so much, and I hope that you guys vote for this motion as a, as a next step forward towards a more just and equitable education system for all our kids. And it starts by us, the adults in the room, doing the necessary work to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. While we wait for the next speaker, even though your light's on, it may not echo through here, but they can hear you on TV, so we all need to stop tapping on mic and check it. It'll work over there, we'll just have to speak a little louder while we're here.
Hello?
Hi, Pitts May, it's Dr. Boyd with the Lowell Schools. You're on live with the school committee. If you're looking at the online coverage, the streaming, if you turn that down, you can then state your name and share your remarks with the committee on Ms. Clark's motion.
Okay, so I'm not online, I'm actually on the phone, is that okay?
That certainly is, as long as you're not hearing feedback, as soon as you state your name and address, they'll know you're ready to begin.
Okay, thank you so much. Hello, my name is Pitts Maiori, and I live at 20 Nelson Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. I'm calling in support of Ms. Clark's motion to mandate school committee members to participate in anti-racism, unconscious attitudes, and implicit bias, bias training provided to district-level administrators. In reading your recent strategic planning initiatives goals, your fundamental commitment to eliminate racial, ethnic, and linguistic achievements and opportunity gaps among all students requires you to have knowledge and awareness of the contributing factors to these disparities. I've worked in education for over 25 years now in the K-21 system. As an equity trainer and a diversity scholar, I found that one contributing factor of educational disparities is colorblindness of teachers, administrators, and policymakers. Do you know how to identify racial biases in your child or grandchild's reading list? Can you tell me what inequity is being promoted when teachers say, line up, boys and girls? Or what are the unconscious assumptions when you hear, why can't they just learn to speak English? As a decision-making body, it behooves you to be able to recognize and respond to biases and inequities, especially in our education system. Those skills and knowledge is what scholar Paul Grossky calls equity literacy. We're asking you to go beyond talking about celebrating diversity and acknowledging difference. We want you to recognize and deeply understand the causes of disparities in order to eliminate them and actively cultivate equity. Citizens of Lowell voted for you, I voted for you. Our children, including my 10-year-old son Logan, needs you to become equity literate. One way to do so is to build your capacity, skills, and knowledge by participating in a training on anti-racism, unconscious attitudes, and implicit bias. As elected school committee members, we expect you to redress biases and build the city of Lowell's capacity to create and sustain a bias-free and equitable learning environment for all of our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pitts May.
Thank you.
We have two more speakers on this item.
Hello?
Hi Andres, how you doing? Is this Andres?
Yes, yes, speaking.
All right, this is Dr. Boyd with Lowell Schools.
Hi, Dr. Boyd.
You're on live with the school committee, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty. If you, if you happen to be watching the committee meeting on streaming, turn that down.
Okay.
And then when you state your name and your address, the committee will know you're ready to begin your remarks, they're ready to hear your remarks.
Okay, sounds good. Hi, my name's Andres Lopez, and I live in 35 Hampshire Street, Lowell, Mass. Am I good?
You're good, you can continue.
Okay. All right, awesome, I just, I wanted to start off by saying that I, I know a few of the committee members there, that I, I know are good people and good intentions and but today I speak in behalf like my community, being Hispanic, being a teacher, and it just, I wanted to make clear the importance of having this go through. And the reason I say this is because if you look around, the people that are in the committee, it seems pretty normal, right? Everyone there feels comfortable. But that's not supposed to be the norm. There's a term called representative bureaucracy, which means that people, it's stated by Kleslaw, forget my abbreviation, and it basically just means that every social group should be represented, especially. And although we do it unconsciously, or why it happens, it is what it is, right? It's 20% Hispanics, 20% Cambodian, Kama'i, 50 to 60% white, right? And that's not what we see there. And I know it's not intentional, because I know a lot of the people in the committee. And it just, the reason I say this is because at times we do things unconsciously, right? We have these pre-biases, and they're implicit, they just happen unconsciously. And if we're not made aware of that, how do we know we're doing wrong? And if we look around and that feels normal, there's something wrong about that. If there's no Hispanics, and there's no Cambodians, and there's no Africans in that committee, there's something wrong with that. And I don't think you intentionally do it, but it is something that I think needs to be addressed. And it has to be something that we can reflect on. I don't, you know, I'm Spanish, and I'm gonna say this data that I think is more relevant, right? My perception, what I was speaking of is perspectives, but I wanna give you data. In Lowell, there were 500 kids that were Hispanics that were suspended for non-violent non-crime. And there's 5,000 Hispanic kids that are in the schools. In Lawrence, there's 13,000, and 800 kids were suspended for the same reason. That means there's less than 0.06% in Lawrence and 10% in Lowell. And that's a problem, because it's, that means a teacher is not aware, or intentionally, or not intentionally, do kids are being suspended for, for no reason, right? And how does that tie in is because it starts with the top. If we can have people at the top taking these tests that, that they're aware, like, hey, there can be biases that we carry that are going on, that we're not aware of, that is, is, is making us do these decisions. And we're, we're a community that has been diverse since I've been here. And to me, this is something that is important, I heard about this meeting today, and I just felt that I, I really wanted to come forward to like, make it a way that we need to do that. And I don't think we're doing it for the people now, but make it a habit and a practice for the people that come. And I don't speak for my people now, while I do, but I'm also speaking for the kids that are coming forward. And that we need to make sure that we mirror those things, that people that can look up and see that those people mirror us in the community, so we have accurate voices representing the people. And when I speak, I speak in that reference. And like I said, I know the people in the committee, Dillon, I know Martin, and they're really good people, they've done a lot, and I know them, but I feel like we have to cause more change, and causing change, where this seems simple, it means a lot. Because at least it's self-accountability, saying, you know what, we might not know what we're doing wrong, and our actions are speaking differently, but we're making, we're aware, and we're here to feel uncomfortable, and we're here to make this change. And so, that's my piece, and thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Andres.
Thank you.
One more speaker on this item.
Hello?
Hi, is this Darcy?
It is.
Hi, Darcy, it's Lowell.
Hi, Joel, I'm gonna turn this thing down, because I'm still listening to the last person, okay? I gotcha, let me get my self together here. All right, I can't hear that anymore.
All right, as soon as you state your name and your address, you can begin, the committee's ready to hear your remarks, you're live now.
All right, thank you. Good evening, my name is Darcy Boyer, and I live at 235 Avon Street. I'm a parent of a child heading into the fifth grade at the Wang, and a member of Lowell Education Justice Alliance and Lowell Mutual Aid Group Lama. I'm here to speak in favor of Ms. Clark's motion to mandate that school committee members participate in anti-racism, unconscious attitudes, and implicit bias training. This is a busy week, and I wasn't sure I'd be able to comment, but I decided that I had to make the time after watching the ugly spectacle of a city council meeting last night, where five out of nine city councilors refused to declare racism a public health crisis, with one going so far as to say that the crisis isn't real and that Lowell isn't Alabama. Clearly, these city councilors were not listening to the real-life experiences of people in Lowell. Or what seems more likely, they were listening, but they just don't care. They refused to acknowledge that racism is a problem because it doesn't impact them. I can only hope that what we saw last night was the deserts of old Lowell, gasping desperately for a few more minutes of life. So regarding tonight's motion, is this training enough? No, there's a deep work that needs to be done at all levels to dismantle the white supremacist underpinnings of our local institutions. But by voting for this motion, you are signaling that you are willing to learn and do better. That is something we did not see from over half our city council last night. And if you find yourself bristling at the term white supremacy, if you reject the idea that institutional racism exists in Lowell, then I suggest that you vote for this motion and start to educate yourself so you can honestly and fairly make decisions that support, rather than harm, our students. As the people who make decisions on funding and program priorities, on curriculum and hiring decisions, it is critical that you have an understanding of the needs of our community, with a special emphasis on the needs of our Black and Brown students who have been historically marginalized and left behind. That's the point of declaring racism a public health crisis. Once we recognize and admit it's a crisis, we put the resources towards addressing and solving it. If you were at the listening session or any of the recent rallies and protests, then you have heard the powerful and heartbreaking stories told by past and current students. Show them that you're really listening and willing to work with them to create the schools we all deserve. Supporting this motion is the very least we can do to start righting the wrongs done to Lowell's Black and Brown students, staff, and teachers. As the youth have reminded us, both at the listening session and at last night's rally, we are the many, and they are the few. Tonight, you get to answer the question, which side are you on? Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you. That's it for the public speaking, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. So first, I would like to appreciate, acknowledge, and appreciate the outpouring of support for this motion, those from community members who wrote and spoke with, and then also those that were willing to comment tonight and available to comment. You know, we are in the business of education, and we as leaders must lead by example. This is a motion, this motion is just a small step, but I believe it really exhibits the value of lifelong learning, which is something I believe we want for all of our students and really all of our community members. This is about increasing awareness and understanding, and I hope that my colleagues will support this motion. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I was just, do we have information on, more information on the training itself?
Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dillon. We're in the, currently in the design and planning phase. It'll go through once you approve this annual budget likely, we'll have even more information on it. Ms. Phillips, can you share a little bit about the preliminary planning leading up to what we thought was a very different budget year?
Sure.
Yes.
It doesn't work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, Mr. Superintendent. So our hope for this training, if you vote for it, first is that it's not a one-shot training, that it is a series of trainings, beginning with an understanding of yourself, your own bias, your own cultural lens that you bring to the work. Then it would transition into understanding of skills and how to apply what you've learned, and then a reflective phase on just the ongoing learning portion of it. So our hope is that it will be at least maybe a series of seven, if you can carve out the time. But if not, it's really important that it's not one-shot, because oftentimes, in order to But if not, um, it's really important that it's not one-shot because oftentimes in order to change practice, um, it's not just about, about hearing a message, but, um, learning how to be reflective and to apply, um, what's been learned.
Um, yeah, do we have a, do we know who is gonna, is this an already existing training that we would be joining? Is it, who runs it? I'm just...
There are, there are different vendors. That, that choice would have to be made through our procurement process. Uh, the state has a procured vendor that we are gonna be participating in the state's process, uh, but that's somewhat different than how we were working to expand it out across Lowell. I can tell you, uh, I participated in a very similar process that is underway and is embedded within Boston Public Schools. And despite the amount of training and amount of awareness that I thought I brought, just being from a very diverse background myself, uh, it's eye-opening. Uh, and being in that reflective space with the people that you make decisions with on a regular basis, uh, I found to be valuable. So, the idea here is as part of our ongoing work, uh, to begin that process with almost a train-the-trainer model for our, uh, district administrators and our school leaders. Here, I believe, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, Ms. Clark, uh, but I believe in our earlier conversations, the idea here is that we could also include school committee members within that training. So whereas you're not responsible for training others, you can take part side-by-side with our administrators as your schedule allows. But it's, other than that, Mr. Dillon, we've got to formulate it and determine if we have the in-house funding or if we're going out for external funding. And then the, we would have to go through a procurement process depending on how much dollars, how many dollars are allocated. And once you get up to certain levels, different procurement processes kick in.
All right, well, I guess my only question is, yeah, from an educator perspective, um, I, I'd like to know, uh, the outcomes. And when I, when I hear like implicit bias, uh, I'm pretty well-educated on implicit bias. And I cannot find any data that suggests that training and implicit biases improves, um, or maybe limits, uh, racial biases that you might have in the future or long-term. So, I guess I just have a question about how we're gonna do this. Cause, uh, I mean, from my perspective, I, as a coach, I've been through all this in a way, exploring all the cultures of the kids that we have. Just, for example, uh, the Cambodian culture. Um, I started to see a pattern with kids, um, quitting the wrestling team and I was having a tough time understanding it. And it took a lot of work and understanding immigrant parents to, for me to get to a place where I was like, okay, we have the same values, they don't understand that I have those same values for their kid. And so I had to go ahead and do that right when they started with me and make that clear to them that they're in a place with me that, uh, where they're being told that hard work is, is valued. And so I was able to get through that way. And so I guess my suggestion would be, you know, I think a big part of the problem is not understanding. And so maybe some sort of, um, we, well, maybe we bring in members of different cultures in our community and present, uh, to us a little bit about their culture. A little bit about what, uh, immigrant parents from their culture are thinking and what values they're bringing here and, and how we can best relate to their parents. And so, and I just get nervous about, I don't know, implicit bias, I don't, I just don't agree with that, that angle. Uh, and I think we can do better to really get where we want to be. So, I don't know. Like where do we go with the planning once this, you know, moves forward? It's just concern, I, I just wanna see the right outcome. You know? So that's why I have, I have a question on the motion. I don't know, Ms. Clark, can you maybe expand?
Yes, so I think I see this as, while, right, there's still much to be determined, I see this as, uh, I'm excited to see what comes of this. You know, what this training does is it gives us all similar tools and language to use when we are talking with one another as school committee members, as community members. And I, I think that this is, like I said, just really a starting point. So that we can better communicate and, and work to understand one another and, and see where people really are coming from. And I appreciate that you've really done some of this work already, but the work is really never over, right? There's always something we can be learning. And I think that, um, I think there's, you know, work that all of us can do in this space. And again, just being a part of the process really shows our community that we are wanting and willing to see change for ourselves, for our city, for our students. You know, some of the statistics and, and some of the things that have been shared at the rally yesterday, at the listening session, I don't think any of us want to, to hear that, those similar stories in next year or four years down the road. And unfortunately, without bringing everyone together to do this work, I think unfortunately what happens, it just continues, it perpetuates. And I, I just really see, again, there's a lot to be determined, but, um, this can only help. And, um, and that's, so again, it's about really having the tools to have conversations, to be able to communicate. And you're right, I think that there's, there will be opportunity then, you know, we're, this is about building trust with our community members and families. Showing them that we, the goodwill that we're, we're putting out there, um, and really asking them to also, you know, be a part of the process. So I think you're right in saying that there's so much more that can be done as a part of this and, and really, you know, there's a lot, there's so many places that we could go from here. And I think, um, I think that's what's so exciting about this. Thank you.
I could, as a point of privilege, because I think you bring up really important points, Mr. Dillon, uh, because all of us that have been in education, we've been a part of a lot of different trainings and discussions. Who the facilitator is, is extremely important. I found great benefit and value in the trainings and the sessions in Boston because it was very skilled people within an educational setting that understood all of that amount of training and was, were provocative enough that pushed on people's thinking, that elicited that type of conversation amongst the group. And I remember specifically the particular session around white privilege. And, uh, you know, I, I share often, I, I come from a background where I didn't feel very privileged at all. Uh, not too different from the way many people came up here in Lowell. And, uh, with a skilled facilitator able to push on that and provoke the thought through that conversation, I found far greater value in that particular session on white privilege than the vast, vast many other sessions I had been involved in on the same, very same topic. So as we start to think through and go through the procurement process about who the facilitator is, that's gonna be extremely important. And it's certainly gonna be extremely important, uh, to me, and I know it is to Ms. Phillips as well, uh, for individuals or organizations that are very skilled within the complex organizations of education, understanding that a vast number and amount of training has been provided that just hasn't yielded, as you said, the outcomes, uh, as a result. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that point of privilege.
Yep. Yeah, yep.
Um, yeah, so, I guess, uh, I don't know, can, can we change the wording or can we make it, um, I just think it's strong and it's, it's very direct and it seems like it's, this is the training that we're gonna do. So I would love to, maybe can we change the wording where we work on creating this training? And encouraging, um, learning about each, you know, learning and, and valuing our differences and, and moving in a direction that way? I mean, I don't know if Ms. Clark would be open to it.
Are you, with the word mandate you mean, and you're fine with everything else?
No, I, mandate, yeah, let's, let's make it something that we do. Implicit bias, to me, is not, uh, a valuable tool, uh, when you're talking about race specifically. Um, and I just disagree with, I, I'm an educator, that's not how I would teach it. So, and I don't think that the value, I don't, I don't think that brings enough value for it to be, and, and we can talk about it, maybe we decide that it does. But I, I just don't, I, I just wouldn't wanna vote on this, um, the way that it's phrased. But I would love to have discussion and move forward with this. So if we can work on the wording...
Let me just add one other thing too, maybe, um, maybe when we pick a company, maybe they may phrase it different too? I don't know, you know what I mean? So that might be a thing too, so.
Uh, that's maybe why I, I think we should make it a little bit more open.
Okay.
I, I don't know, we can, we can certainly talk it out.
All right.
But that seems like, it seems like we're going down a training or down a, a road with the wording that we have, if that makes sense.
Sure, thank you. Why don't we hear from Mr. Howie and think about maybe a different word or something and we'll, okay. Mr. Howie?
Uh, I had no problem supporting this motion. I will support anything right now that Ms. Hillary Clark or, uh, Mr. Michael Dillon bring to the floor. Uh, I'm actually excited about this team that we have right here, I'm looking at all of yous. I'm a little scared when Jim ain't around, but that's what happens when you're in the military. But I've never been happier in my life, really. I was gonna wait to the end of this meeting, but I think this is a perfect time. Uh, for me anyways. And if I cry, Mayor, gavel me, okay? I knew the mayor's father and if he watched you last night perform, I don't wanna use the word perform, how you stood in front of a city that in my opinion, watched city life, if you wanna hear the real me, right here, I'm trying to be respectful. Uh, but I'm gonna tell you, Mayor, your father'd be the proudest guy on the planet. I know your father pretty well. And, uh, I thought you hit a home run, not a grand slam, home run. There was a couple of things that I could say, oh, Mayor, you made people wait three hours to speak. And then some of the speakers were unbelievable. And like I said, see me Tuesday of next week when I'm with Judge Antis and I'm gonna talk a lot about you, how proud I am of you. And, uh, just to get back to this motion, uh, with that said, Mayor, congratulations, by the way. I got some great calls from people that don't know much, uh, today. I got one from Ed Kennedy telling me how great you did, someone that didn't even wanna make you the mayor. At one time, isn't it funny, the way the world turns, huh?
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, another one was my friend, Dave Nagel. And I know, uh, both of those people, one was yelling at you a little bit. Uh, you know, the one of them, not, not Kennedy. He said, hey, why did he make people, uh, from out of Lowell, why did he let them speak? I says, well, that's what your cousin does. He lets us speak. You haven't gavelled me maybe once, I think, you may, it's stifled me. But, uh, Ms. Clark, getting back to you, I never felt so good being on a school committee and this is my fourth one. And Mr. Dillon questioned what he is, I have no problem, we should just go into some type of discussion. I love what he said about bringing the people of color and everybody, even the white guys like me. Bring us to a mic, let us hear your complaints. I'm willing to do that. I think it's a great idea, buddy. And that's why I love having both of yous on the school committee. And congratulations to both of yous so far, because most of the stuff's in secret squirrel stuff. Executive session, people don't know what you've done. Great job, I'm gonna back your motion tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Darty?
I thank you, Your Honor. Um, I wanna say right out, I, I was, uh, very excited to see this motion and disheartened. And disheartened because I thought, we haven't been doing this all along, you know? And as somebody who's been quite invested in this school system for over 12 years, because both my children are Lowell high graduates, I was very moved and disturbed by the listening sessions, by what our students had to say, current students and past students, about what they had experienced in the Lowell public schools. It's not a situation that I want to continue. And, uh, shame on us that we haven't done it sooner. And in terms of implicit bias, I mean, I think of implicit like not really being aware and not being out front with it, like maybe you don't even know you're doing it. So that lifelong learning, self-awareness piece, I think that's part of the, the job. I think that if someone, if I said, if I asked either of my children, did you experience racism when you were at Lowell High, they would've said no, because they were born with white skin. And it's hard to understand what somebody else goes through, what, what's that Native American saying? Until you walk a mile in my moccasins, you don't truly understand it. Or to actually, um, as Dr. Boyd said, to have the experience of a provocative facilitator, asking questions, having you think about your experiences. Like for me, my father was an eight, he, he dropped out in the eighth grade. You know, I was six of seven kids and I didn't have music lessons or, but we had food on the table, we had a house over, a roof over our head. And I never thought of me, myself as having a privileged upbringing either. But I know now that I, that my own children have had huge privileges, just having two English-speaking, college-educated parents, for one thing. So I think that we do lead by example in this community, that Lowell's a wonderful, diverse city. The diversity is our greatest strength. And I, and it's not a city like some Alabama city or, not to pick on Alabama. But we have work to do. All we have to do is listen to the people in the community. Look at our achievement gap to understand that there's work we could be doing. Not that we can solve everything, but to me, this is a very important first step. I embrace the opportunity to learn more about myself and how I can do a better job and how I am a active contributing member of this community and the world in which I live. And I think the time is late. We absolutely have to be doing this now. We should've been doing more sooner. So I wholeheartedly support it exactly as it's worded, or if you wanna change it in any way to make some, another colleague more comfortable, it's absolutely the way we wanna go. And I thank you for bringing it forward.
Sure, uh, Mr. Dakota?
I will be supporting this as well, in any form, however you wanna rephrase it. If you don't wanna rephrase, that's fine too. Um, I think that, as, having been a lifelong educator and enjoying every minute of learning new things constantly throughout my career, learning this would be a great addition to me, me personally. Uh, and maybe for all of us to become better school committee people looking out for our kids. Cause that's, at the end of the day, that's what our job is, to look out for our kids. So, again, thank you.
Mayor, can I speak twice on this, please?
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Howie?
I, trying to give up something that we've done in executive session, I can't do that, so I'm gonna try to say it the right way. Uh, the reason why I'm so excited about this motion is I'm actually excited about those two new, my two new colleagues. And what, I got off Ms. Clark recently, this is just the way I feel, it's my opinion, that she said, why don't we ever really listen to our team that we got up in front of us that were paying all these people yellow, were paying these people too much? Let me tell you something, in this city so far, what a job this school committee has done. Even the past one, we had fights, but we've hired some tremendous people. And, uh, that's what I got out of Hillary Clark, folks. I got out of her, hey Bob, why do you micromanage them week after week after week? I really don't think I micromanage, but I guess I'm guilty of it sometime. That's what I got out of it. And since you've been here, Mr. Superintendent, I think this is your one-year month coming up, isn't it, buddy? Yeah. And look what you did last year with Latifah and Minerva and with dancing in the JFK Center and giving out 1,300 backpacks and firemen feeding the kids ice cream. I mean, come on, I mean, it, it doesn't get any better. And yes, we faced this, you know, virus, which is one of the worst things I've ever seen in my life. And I'm so excited about tonight, I was, I was really excited. And then when Jim ain't here and Connie's not here, it starts to bother me a little bit. But anyways, I'm happy, uh, that these two people got elected this year and they don't even know how great they're doing already. So, thank you for the extra time, Mayor.
Thank you. So do you, I, I mean, I was just looking up implicit bias and I kinda understand what you're saying, but it all ties in, so how do you wanna...
I can go through it a little bit, but I, I don't, we don't need to waste the time right now.
Okay, so what do you wanna do?
So I feel, I do feel strongly, you know, uh, while I think implicit bias is scary, uh, to, you know, some folks, I, we all have it. And I think there are many of us, many community members who probably don't even know what it means or are aware of it. And...
That's why it's implicit.
That's why it's implicit. And so I think the way that I might, uh, adjust this a little bit is maybe to add, you know, awareness of implicit bias. Because I, it is, um, that's part, that's just part of this work. And I agree, we don't know exactly what this training looks like. And I do have confidence in, you know, that our, the team is going to, you know, uh, get the right trainers here to do this really important work. But that is one of the really critical parts of that, of, of this work, is about understanding and being aware of our implicit bias. Um, and that's, uh, so I, so I do feel strongly to keep that phrase in there, but I definitely... phrase in there, but I definitely, I think, adding awareness of implicit bias might make it, if that would make it a little more comfortable, or-
Yeah, so if I can just, you know, quickly go down the route where I think the problem comes in, is, so implicit bias is, you know, perspective built in your brain. It's, you know, it's a natural part of your brain. It's, the fight or flight system is involved, and it's, it's what your brain learns about your past experiences. And the best example that I've heard, or, you know, a good way to think about it, I guess, is learning to read. When you learn to read, you first identify an A, then you identify a B. You're able, you're able to identify those shapes. You know, fast forward to now, and if we are trying to read the word "program," we don't identify each tiny word, I mean, each tiny letter. We see that word as "program," and we identify it quickly. So our brain, you know, develops these shortcuts, they called, or like they consolidate information. And what I don't like about it being used in racial bias is it, it just takes on, I understand that during a racial bias training course, right, or whatever the heck we're calling it, you know, implicit bias, biases can come up and be talked about. But when you start really doing research where that is going, I found very respectable journal articles who are getting to the point where they're trying to calculate blame and, and figure out a score on who is to blame, or how much blame you are due for implicit bias. And that's, to me, that is a weird, weird slope that I don't think that we need to use as a teaching tool to teach about race. And it can certainly be a part of the course, of course, like that is gonna come up during anything that we talk about. But having it in the title of our, of our course name, just, I can't, I don't know, it's, it's too tough for me. I can't be, you know, support it.
All right. Well, why don't we, we'll add those couple of words, we'll vote on it. When we come back, actually, with the training guidelines, or however you want to phrase it, what the courses are, and, you know, whether it's gonna be half in-person and half online, or whatever, however they do it. And obviously, it's gonna be more educational basis than business-based for companies, right? I would imagine that this setup for, for each type of program you want, so. All right. So, you put it in there, right?
Do you want me to read it so it's clear?
Sure, go ahead.
Mandate the school committee members to participate in the anti-racism unconscious attitudes and in, and aware, awareness of implicit bias provided to district-level administrators.
So why don't we do a roll call?
Mira Leahy.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Mr. Dillon.
Nope.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Howie.
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one absent, approved.
Thank you. Reports of superintendent, so budget update, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay with you and the committee, I think it would make the most sense to talk about our work around COVID response and reopening, and then move into the discussion about budget. The reopening plan ultimately will have to be funded by the budget, so I think it'll make more sense sequentially. If the committee, and Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with that, I would suggest that reordering. And I believe we have a few speakers on the reopening, but if it's, at this point, you're not making any decisions, so do you want to hear them first or after? I have no-
I want to do the speakers first, and then-
Mary, so I have Monica Lundberg here.
That's Monica.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello?
Hi, Monica, it's Dr. Boyd again.
Hi, Joel.
How are you doing? You're live with the school committee, just a heads up. We have you listed for two different items. You spoke to Ms. Clark. It's all, you're also listed to speak about the reopening work. Did you also want to speak to that as well?
Yes, that's correct. And I, I realized that last time I did not state my address for the record, only my name. My name is Monica Lundberg, and my address is 12 Alyssa Drive in Lowell. So the piece of the reopening plan that I specifically have some serious reservations about is slide, slideshow that was linked on the agenda. There is a table that lists off the capacity of each school building in the district, for how many students could fit in the building at three feet of social distancing. And this document, I wouldn't, I need to know what the methodology was to come to this, these numbers, because I can't speak to other school buildings in the district, but my daughter attends the STEM Academy, which has already been very crowded. At, what under, what, 830 kids we had this year, somewhere around there. It's, it's situated. This document, and that was without social distancing, this document says that we can socially distance kids at three feet and fit 993 students in the building. I don't know how that could be possible. And I'm really, really terrified to send my kid back to school, because I don't think that it's gonna be safe. I don't think that it's gonna be safe physically. I don't think it's gonna be safe emotionally. And when I see numbers like that, I have to wonder, who's making these decisions? Have they ever set foot in the building? Have they ever met a child? Have they, do they have any idea what they're talking about? Or are these decisions being made by somebody who pulled up a floor plan and some pieces of graph paper, doesn't bother to check, "Oh, well, can we actually fit that many kids in the building?" Or are there sinks and cabinets that would need to be torn out in order to fit that many kids in the building? And I know that these numbers are meant to be maximum-capacity numbers, but it seems like they're shooting so far high as to be completely disconnected with reality, at least in the, for the STEM Academy. And it, it just, it makes me question all the other aspects of the plan, because if this is, if the people writing this, this page of the document are the same people who wrote the other pages, what safe can I have as a parent that the rest of those plans are feasible, are realistic, are based in data, when I can so obviously see in front of me that one of the pages is completely disconnected from reality? So the questions that I would like to hear answered on the committee are, number one, what was the methodology for determining those capacities? Number two, what do those capacities assume is the state of the classrooms? Do those capacities assume that there is any furniture built in? Number three, do those capacities take into account the fact that children don't ever sit still? And a desk that you put in one spot is not necessarily gonna stay in that spot all day long? And number four, have the teachers, the classroom teachers been asked about capacity issues? Where is the respect for our professional educators and the fact that if we open in-person, they will be literally risking their lives to educate our kids? And we can't even do them the courtesy of giving them the respect of their input, of asking them, "How many kids can you fit in your classroom?" Of doing the research to make sure that the numbers that we're using are accurate, are reflective of the current on-the-ground status of the buildings? Now, I know there've been some changes made to the building this summer, but I really don't see how any changes within the realms of the laws of physics could shoehorn another 100 kids into a building that was already overcrowded while also keeping them further apart from each other, because they were not three feet apart last year.
Are you all set? Yep, are you all set?
Thank you, Monica. The mayor's asking if that concludes your remarks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Hey, Molly, it's Joel. Heads up, you're live.
Hi.
You're live on air. I don't know if you're listening to the livestream?
Yes.
All right. When you turn down the livestream, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty. When you turn down the livestream, you're live, ready to share your remarks with the school committee on school reopening. If you state your name, your name and address, they'll know you're ready to begin, okay?
Okay. All right, thank you. My name is Molly Kelly-Munn. I live at 16 Beachnut Road. I'm a grade-five teacher at the Butler Middle School, and I'm also the United Teachers of Lowell Vice President for Middle School Teachers. I was also a member of the Full Return to School Task Force, which helped generate a comprehensive, multi-page draft document for school reopening. So going forward, I have some major concerns. I have taught for 19 years, and I've never been so scared and anxious to return to the classroom setting. First of all, when I examine the slideshow that is about to be presented, it states that students will need to be spaced three feet apart in the classroom, which could allow for an entire classroom of 25 students to fit. This requirement is nonsense and needs to go back to the original guidelines of six feet apart. It's the only safe way. When you go to any store, rock basket, Walmart, restaurant, anywhere, the requirement is to stay six feet apart, with almost all indoor venues being capped at 50% capacity. Why does that change when we're in the classroom? In fact, we'll be in the same small classroom with students all day, and it will be difficult to keep that distance throughout the day. Frankly, I think it's impossible. I think that DEFI is being reckless in allowing these requirements to go forward. The only place I've heard of the three-foot rule is from the Department of Ed. Even the CDC is recommending six feet of distance. We need to follow in the footsteps of Boston and Lexington and make it a six-foot requirement. Second, the ventilation at many of the school buildings is deplorable. Many of the buildings have issues with their heating and AC system. I also wonder how often the filters are being replaced, if at all. At the Butler where I teach, we have not had a functioning AC for over two years. What happens when we go back to school and the temperature in the classroom is over 90 degrees and we all have to wear a face mask all day? It doesn't seem healthy to me. And we even have a handful of schools with no ACs. Also, many of the schools have had issues with their heating system. Again, I'm referencing the Butler because that's where I work. Back in January and February, I reported that the heating system was not working correctly. The classrooms were reaching temperatures of over 90 degrees on a daily basis. Many teachers had to open the windows in January and February to regulate the temperature inside the classroom to get a fresh intake of air from outside. This was also an issue in the winter of 2019. How is this healthy for anyone? The ventilation systems in all schools need to be fixed properly before we can re-enter safely. It was reported by the City of Lowell that on July 10th, there were 240 confirmed cases of COVID in children 19 and under. I can guarantee you that there are many more. I assume that many of these children attend the Lowell Public Schools. Luckily, we've been closed, and I truly believe that this has helped contain the spread in Lowell, although we are one of the top cities in Massachusetts with high positivity rates. What also makes me nervous is that many children are asymptomatic. Therefore, they may not easily spread it to other children, but they can spread it to adults. The majority of classrooms have multiple teachers and support staff entering their rooms daily, which is a concern. Just look at the three teachers in Arizona who were teaching summer school together. All three of them caught the virus, and one even passed away. In closing, I think it's just far too dangerous at this point. It's, it's too contagious of a virus for us to enter the classes safely. The regulations are too weak, and the ventilation systems are not functioning properly. It's not worth one child, one teacher, one staff member, one family member, myself, or any of my family members to risk getting sick or even worse, dying of the virus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thanks.
You have reached the voicemail box of 978-884-
Do I go to the next one?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi, David, how you doing? It's Joel.
Hi, how are you?
All right. You're live with the school committee. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty here, so if you're looking at the livestream, if you turn it down-
I turned the volume off.
Turn it down. When you say your name and address, the school committee will know you're ready to begin your remarks, but you're signed up to speak about school reopening.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is David Grenger. I live at 43 Walnut Street. I'm a music teacher in the district and a parent of a sixth grader. Given the recent cuts in allied arts at some schools, and the fact that the band positions have not been posted, I hope that the committee and the superintendent recognize the importance of sustaining arts education for our kids in whatever form instruction takes in the fall. Whether there's a full remote learning model in the fall, or if we're back in the buildings, instruction in art and music can still be very productive, very meaningful. Music and art will be a vital aspect of rebuilding our school cultures and unifying our community again. Even though the remote learning model was difficult for all of us to launch this spring, in my classes, I still had students writing original songs, composing and sharing music, engaging in critical dialogue with each other about music. Remote classes reinforce content in other subject areas. Teachers performed in remote ensembles. Some of you may have seen the videos that were posted of teachers performing together. Those efforts by our music teachers can be a roadmap for student-centered performances. Allied arts classes in bands are the reason a lot of kids get up out of bed in the morning. Our education is crucial for every kid, though. When I first meet a, a new group of students, I ask them to put their heads together to identify the attributes that they need to succeed in music. They list things like confidence, collaboration, pattern recognition, communication, critical listening skills. Kids cite social, emotional learning objectives like empathy and compassion. A few kids say things like a good voice or a rhythm, but by and large, the attributes that they need to succeed in music, that they recognize, are attributes that they need to succeed in school and in their lives, period. We need to make sure that those opportunities are still provided for our kids, and given the intensity of- And given the intensity of unrest in our country right now, we also need to sustain the arts for their basic function as well, which is to foster cultural understanding in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hello?
There, now you're coming through, Paul. Can you hear me?
I'm coming through.
You're live. Just a heads up, you're live already. There is a- All right, once you introduce yourself, the committee's ready to hear your remarks. You're signed up.
All right, well, that's fine. I was on the Zoom. That's why when you called the number, I just- All right, I'm off the Zoom. Anyhow, Paul George is president, United Teachers of Lowell. And I wanted to just make some comments on the back to school sort of scheduling and the report of the superintendent on this. As you know, the coronavirus has changed everything. And although I see a lot of reports, and I know there's extensive reports that have been put together by teachers and members of the public and administrators that have worked very hard for the three options as far as coming back. And I understand there's a lot of consideration about the distancing and so on. The real question, the thing that concerns me the most is the actual condition of the buildings themselves and the capacity to have people in the buildings during a pandemic. The thing that concerns me the most is ventilation and the air conditioning systems, which may or may not be functioning in the various schools. Certainly, the exchange of fresh air has been talked about extremely often. As a matter of fact, as you know, we're sort of measured return from normal, whatever that would be. Restaurants are able to function with outside seating and not inside. The germs are concentrated when you're in a confined area, and they're particularly problematic if you have a place that doesn't have adequate ventilation or fresh air coming into the living space or the learning space for teachers and students. I brought this back, and we've spoken with the superintendent on this on several occasions in articulating those concerns. Just in the last few days, there was a proposal made to DESI by the MTA and AFD, the two major unions in the state, having to do with proposals of a phasing-in beginning of the school year, which I'm sure we can discuss at some other time. However, one of the priorities that they listed in this phasing-in process was evaluating and upgrading windows, HVAC, and ventilation systems. We know the problems we've had in our schools. We know them. They're historic. When we asked our teachers, were they concerned about ignition and ventilation issues in our schools? 87% of them said yes. They had great concerns about returning back to school unless those systems were totally functioning and they had some reliability. As the school committee, I'm sure we all agree. We all want to go back, and teachers that I've spoken to, obviously, I've spoken to many of them, would like to see a return to normal, go back into the classroom, brick and mortar, face-to-face education with the richness that it offers, obviously, the personal connection that it offers, the ability to reach children every single day because they're in front of you. But it can only be done if it's safe. It can only be done if it's done safely. Our members told us through our survey, we can share further information on the survey. We have shared much of it with the superintendent. I'm very concerned about the cleanliness, the sterilization process, the ability to be able to ensure a healthy environment, but one of the primary concerns is air quality and ventilation. In that proposal by AFD, MTA, and the Boston Teachers Union to DESI, the focus, one of the focus areas was on ventilation. Just this week, Harvard University came out with the Harvard School on its health, coming out and explaining how important it was to make sure the ventilation, you had capable ventilation systems that were to be assessed and make sure that you have a healthy school and a healthy classroom for every student to walk into and every adult who's educating them. I'm asking you, as the school committee, to take a position to try to get an outside consultant if necessary, get an outside agency to come in and inspect. It shouldn't be a matter of us. I report on a regular basis failures in the school system through my custodians who inform me, who send the information to Central for the superintendent and the Chief, Dr. Hall, the COO. But it shouldn't be a matter of just reporting when things are broken and try to fix it. We need an assessment on how healthy our buildings are so that we don't make the mistake of putting children and adults who educate those children in an unsafe environment, particularly considering the additional strain of the COVID pandemic. So I'm asking for action on your part to ensure the safety of our employees and our students.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. So we have, what, 19 pages, but they're not all full, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think you heard from the speakers, and I also recently, committee members, who received the recent analysis of the survey we conducted with families. I would suggest to the committee that this here is not a plan. It's our process and our step within our planning. We are expecting and hoping to release a plan for the community that's approved by the committee the beginning of August. We have established, knowing that this pandemic is moving quickly, that we're learning more and more each day, that we have a responsibility to put forth as informed a plan as we possibly can. We also have a responsibility that we give families as much notice as possible when they make plans for their children and for themselves. And the beginning of August would yield one month of time between what is currently now established as our first day of school. And I emphasize "currently established" as our first day of school because it is certainly within the purview of this committee to revisit your calendar, and that may be some feedback that you want to share or have us analyze as we go forward within our planning process. But as a committee, if you consider it this way, we use the language of phasing. We went through a phase, if you will, of analysis, assessing, analyzing. We're going to share with you the results of that assessment. That was based on guidance that was provided to us from external groups as well as recommendations that were provided to us by internal groups. There's been an extraordinary amount of work that's gone into this up to this point, including parents, teachers, principals. Again, I want to thank Dr. McLaughlin, Mr. Stahl, Mr. Skinner, and Ms. Robert, who took a leadership role in our multiple task forces. You also heard from UTL, that's been an extraordinary partner in this, and then the many parents. We've also had our central office conducting analyses. You're going to see that data here tonight, but do not assume that this is in any way a plan. We need to move from analysis into design, putting those details into motion. You heard from one of our very involved parents. How does that actually work for kids? That's necessary for families to see those details. That's the next step we move into. And then we will go into a place of operationalizing that design before we get to implementing it. This will be thought through and worked through in every way possible to ensure the safety of our children. We know, and we've said, and our community is fully aware, that nothing takes the place of in-person instruction for our kids. But we have to do it in a way that's safe for our kids and ensures the safety of our entire community, and that is our top priority. You may also remember and remind the community that within the school district's strategic plan, we adjusted year one, knowing that we're moving into this year one of our strategic plan. And we looked at four lenses or frames for how we need to move into this year. And that's physical health, mental wellness, and you heard just some of the fear that our families are experiencing, even if they haven't experienced the direct trauma of loss that we know a good many families have experienced. Fiscal prudence, which you'll see us moving into with our budget conversation following, and then maintaining flexibility. So we're still very much in the process where we're talking about planning of three scenarios: in-person, remote, and then a combination of the two. Ultimately, we need to determine which of those scenarios and which of that planning process will we be implementing on day one when we determine and finalize day one. And let me again take a moment just to say what we are currently considering as day one, because again, the calendar is some flexibility that you have as a committee. And obviously, the circumstances have changed significantly now versus when you approved that calendar. That does require some continued conversations, as it should, with our teachers, with the UTL. But they have ultimately, as I've said, been extraordinary partners through this effort, and they understand that we're in a very different place now and have raised their hand to say, any collaboration that's needed, they're there and available. And I want to thank Mr. Georges for that partnership. He and I talk, and sometimes some weeks more than I talk to my wife at this point, so I really want to appreciate that. So we're going to take you through that analysis, and then I'm really interested in hearing your feedback, what you've heard from families. The data that you just got from the survey, two important points of note. 68% of families, over 2,000, responded to our survey. 68% said they want options. They want an opportunity to determine what's in the best interest of their family. And 70% said they would like to be in-person, in the classroom, if we can do it safely. Another 30% for them, they just don't see how that could work for their family in a safe way right now. And with that, I will hand the-
Excuse me, Mayor. Through you, to the superintendent. I'm not sure if there's any way, after I heard Paul George's speak, I would have comments now, but I don't mind waiting it to the end. But is there something we could get out of Mr. Underwood early so he doesn't have to sit through it, or do you need him here for the whole night? Because after what I heard, a union leader say, I would want to bring Mr. Underwood up right away, to be honest with you, because what he said, I would like to say something that might take three minutes.
His slide's coming up pretty early, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Houghey.
I can wait. Thank you.
At the same time, I did give Mr. Underwood the heads up that facilities might be the top of mind for a lot of people, so he is prepared.
Well, after hearing Paul George's, it is to me, so I can wait. Thank you, Mayor.
But we'll start first, which I think is important, before we get to facilities, with what enrollment looks like. There have been some questions about how many young people will actually be enrolling in our schools. In some cases, there have been questions with the economics as it's affecting families. What would that impact have for families moving from private to public? Others have raised questions about how many families might be opting for homeschool or how many families might be opting for online, so that's been top of mind. Then understanding the number of children in our schools to then the space that our schools allow to be able to educate them was kind of the through line. Ms. Phillips, if you can rather quickly go through enrollment, and then I'll share with you the facilities and have Mr. Underwood available.
Sure, so-
Speak loudly because the microphone's not working internally.
Great, great. Mr. Mayor, school committee members, this is our projected enrollment for 2020, 2021. This is the most current information that we have. You'll see here that this is for grades one through 12. So basically, this is a roll-up of last year's numbers. And that's why kindergarten is not included in this chart here. There are some numbers that will shift. One, because if a student has moved, the only way we know that they've moved is if they notify us or if the receiving school requests their records. So given that we're in summer and given the pandemic, some of this information may be slow or not happening. But these numbers may change, but this is what we have right now. I also want to acknowledge that grade nine looks out of balance with the other grades. Now, this is because grade nine typically decreases based on admission to the VOC. And we don't know right now that admission status. Typically, it's about 1/3 of the eighth-grade class. So if we reduce that number 1263 by 1/3, that's typically the number that we would anticipate coming in for the new school year. Last year, we had 1,127 kindergarten students. As of, maybe we pulled this data a week ago, we had 904 kindergartners, and that's with the window of registration being open just for about one month. So typically, we do have enrollment all the way up to the beginning of the school year. So this number is not alarming to us. It does seem aligned with what we would expect in prior years. And then we do have new students to the district. Again, you know, given the changes due to the pandemic, it's hard to completely know, but families are still coming, and they have shared that the online registration process has not been an impediment to registering. So, yes. I wouldn't know if they were coming from St. Louis School. But if they're coming to Lowell Public Schools, the registration process is open. It's available, so I feel confident that they're counted in these numbers if they believe they're coming to our district. And so last year, between April and August, in a normal year, we enrolled about 332 new students in grades one through eight. We're currently at 141, but again, that was just in a very short window of time. So we are anticipating to continue registering all the way up to the beginning of the school year.
Excuse me. So did we enroll during the pandemic, though, or is this before the pandemic? Or the shutdown, I should say?
The registration window opened late this year. Because of the pandemic, we transitioned everything to online. So where we typically would have opened up registration in March, we opened it up in May.
Okay. But do we register kids during the school year?
Yes.
All right. So how many kids, did we register kids from March to May?
I don't recall there being very many. I do recall maybe one or two, but not very many.
Excuse me, one quick question. When you look at the high school, is that total number 2331? Is that the number at the high school?
You're going to the enrollment report, so there's an important discrepancy between the enrollment report and the forecasted enrollment. One includes the roll-up of students from the prior grade for a forecasted enrollment. The enrollment report is actual enrollment that wouldn't have included the roll-up yet. That occurs on what date? Do we roll it up?
August 15th.
August 15th. So your enrollment figures on your enrollment port that you typically receive, after August 15th, it'll show their next grade level. So for right now, you're not seeing the full four grades at the high school. So that's the difference between those two items. So if you follow the, Mr. Houghey, if you go to the slide deck, you'll see the forecasted number where you'll see all grades. So if you look at grade nine through 12, you'll see a forecasted number for the high school. And the one difference there is we'll get a late estimate on kids that are actually going over to the VOC. So you see a really, we know that our ninth grade's going to be high, but it's not likely going to be that high because we still have to assess for the kids that ultimately, or the students that ultimately, go over to the VOC.
And in the enrollment report, that also includes students who requested a special education evaluation, even if they're not planning to come to Lowell Public Schools. So we account for them on that report.
Okay, sure, continue. Oh, yep, Ms. Darny.
I just wanted to ask a question about the online enrollment. Typically, I thought the Family Resource Center would also screen kids for their English language abilities. How is that done if the whole process went online? Was that a factor in the enrollment information that you have? Thank you.
Yes, that has been a factor. The testing typically is in-person. The testing is scheduled at a later time, but that hasn't stopped us from being able to register the students.
So you were able to capture that information for who, students coming in that were going to need English language services, even through the online enrollment?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right. So I want to stop here for a second before we even get into the numbers. All right. An important part of the analysis, and you heard this from not only a parent, but also a teacher, we use the guidance that's provided to us for how we do these calculations. Surprised us, as well as the rest of the community, that the guidance we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was not the six feet that we've heard time and time again throughout the course of this pandemic, but then instead a three-foot number. I don't believe, at this point, I've heard from one single person in terms of feedback, that they're appreciating the DESI guidance coming all of a sudden. I do not believe that we are in a position as a school district to justify what DESI is providing. I don't believe it's our responsibility to sell people on what we believe to be safe. I think our responsibility is to make sure that we're making decisions based on the best information available to us. The actual standards that we're using, as Mr. Underwood continues his analysis, is the standard that's been provided by Harvard University's Department of Public Health. They came forward with a pretty detailed report. Mr. Underwood's currently going through that data as well to continue with this analysis. But the first question that has often been asked of us, in a most generous way, what is the most that we could expect to fit students within the school? So before we kill the messenger as a community, Mr. Underwood and his staff was directed to say, take the most lenient of standard, because we have a responsibility to report to DESI these numbers. And with their guidance, they said, with three feet between students, how many could you fit? Now, you'll see that number, in the most generous way, is approximately 19,000 students. We never have had that many students here in Lowell. So it's important for the committee to realize that you may hear, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sharing these larger numbers than, again, what our very involved parent at the STEM will say, defies the optics of what you know to be in the buildings. Now, the help here, though, for you is to say, do some back-in-napkin math. You say you multiply that by two to get to the standard that Harvard University's Department of Public Health and the CDC and others have applied, and you get to a number that's closer to 10,000, far lower than any number of enrollment that we've ever had in the district. So quite simply, while others may say, hey, school committee, you can, we actually may very well want to err on the side of safety for our community, which would suggest that we can't even fit all of our young people into most of our buildings. Now, again, that's a very global statement. Our buildings are very different. Some of our buildings have more space, some less space. But Mr. Underwood and his team have been doing yeoman's work to analyze a lot of data without a whole lot of definitive guidance. So you can't simply be in a place of guessing when there's something as serious as a pandemic. I believe the better standard for us to use is a well-established university's school of public health, whose researchers have worked and have released a report that is being used around this country. We just happen to have them locally, rather than something that seems to be coming to us that we are then asked to communicate to people as though we know what is all of a sudden safe. That just happens to be my feedback for the committee, but I'm interested in hearing the feedback from the committee as well as the public, because this is an important data point. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Underwood is here. I know Mr. Houghey suggested he had a question right away. We can, I can pause there, and we can flip to Ms. Phillips, you can flip to, not an easy one to read, but you can kind of hear the substance of that. I don't know if you want to pause there, Mr. Mayor, and allow Mr. Underwood to get to the microphone.
Sure. Just, Mr. Dillon had a question first.
Hi, yeah, just, can you give some insight into those numbers? Because I'm sure, like many of us heard from people in the district, that they're concerned about their building, and, you know, the estimated student capacities are gigantic and through the roof. Is that a general calculation based on square footage that's caused, like, if we use the whole gym space and everything?
Mr. Underwood, if-
Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, yeah.
I don't know if your microphone works. There's a, hit the button, because it might work for you in public.
Just by now? There isn't one on this one.
There's no switch?
So I'll talk a little loud. Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Sheen, administrators, committee members, good evening.
You're good at home.
Okay. So, thank you for the setup, Mr. Superintendent. We were quite surprised when we put these calculations together also. But one of the things is to remember is, this was taking out rugs that were set up for reading spaces, this was taking out the tables, this was maximizing our space according to our guidelines. So we know right off the bat that we're not going to be fitting, you know, all those kids in those classrooms. And surprisingly, like Mr. Superintendent said, just the sheer fact that they're bigger than the numbers we had in our moment, in such a, you know, everybody knows we're fighting for space now. So when you see these numbers, it's like, well, where did they come from then? We took all the furniture out, we spaced them out. And one other thing to remember is, on the guidelines that are three feet per student, in many of our classrooms and schools right now, we already have three feet between our desks. So when we set them up, we have three, you know, roughly two and a half to three feet between our desks, which is further than three feet apart from our students. Because you have a regular desk that's 18 by 28 inches wide. So when you squeeze those together, we're actually squeezing them together. So that's what the difference in the numbers is. In a real world, we wouldn't be squeezing them that close, and so I can certainly see the concern of the numbers and the confusion. But to go back to the ventilation and the concerns that we, it absolutely is a concern. And we're talking with DPW every day. We talked to them as little, as long ago as this afternoon, knowing we're coming here. We did a full change of filters in all the schools, I'm sorry, for half the schools prior to this summer. With the new fiscal budget, it was the plan of the city to do the other half of the filters. Air conditioning, no promises, been a problem, it's going to continue to be a problem with the limited funds that are going to come this year. Even the projects that I think were in place for, and wished for last year, may not take place. We're going to continue to hope for that and put pressure on them the best we can. Jim Green and I spoke this morning about the ventilation in the schools. They're planning on going in starting tomorrow and working on individual schools with a team and focusing straightly on exhaust fans. That's something we've been looking at, again, for the last couple of years, but with the new COVID, you know, issues that we got, we're putting that to the top of the issue list. So, again, these numbers were figured with the calculations that DESI had given us of three feet per student, which I said, again, we moved out all the tables, we moved out all the rugs. Anything that wasn't attached to the walls in our guidelines, we moved them out. So that's the increase in the numbers.
Ms. Darny?
Thank you. So would that mean what happens to computer stations, bookcases, you know, teacher supplies that are used as part of the learning? Those were all taken out?
Not all of them. Anything that was fixed to the wall, bookcase and that stuff, but the nine-by-12 rugs that are most of the elementary classrooms, those were adjusted into maximum space now.
But what about the computer stations? Because are those fixed in the classrooms?
Not all of them. Most of the classroom, most of the computer classrooms now in our schools have been converted to other space, because we've got computer carts in a lot of the-
No, I mean, in the classrooms, we have, the elementary classrooms will have computer stations that the kids can go and work on programs. Are those taken out, then?
Only if they were, if they were calculated where there were computer desks that were already set up three feet apart, they would have stayed. But if they were a community table, such as a six-by-six that had computers fixed on them, some of them were facing each other, like in the high school, those were not calculated into capacity student.
So we would have to replace all those tables with desks?
We would. Same thing for some of the elementary schools that are utilizing tables instead of desks. That would increase the numbers. I think we would have to buy roughly 40 classrooms in furniture, if that was the case, and we go forward with that.
Sure, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, Dr. Boyd, sorry to interrupt, but can you just maybe make clear for everybody, like, this is an exercise to, you know, bring this information forward and work through it as we see, right? We're not talking about removing every piece of furniture from the school for September and throwing the computers in the trap, like, this is an exercise for what our large, what our largest capacity could possibly be, right? So this has no effect on what we are talking about doing or a direction we're going in, right?
Yes, and I think even to give more details, DESI requested this analysis of us. I believe it to be in the purview of this school committee as to what you believe to be the best route for this community. And I cannot bring a recommendation to you at any time that would somehow suggest we're going to go to three feet of distancing and moving kids into classrooms this way. But this was an analysis that was required of us, so you will see these types of numbers in what we have to submit as reports. So I do think it's an important exercise for the committee to see the types of analysis that we're undertaking as a school district, but very much so. An exercise, this is not a recommendation, nor is it a plan, nor do I even think it's feasible.
Yeah, I just, I felt, I want to, you know, we always have to make that clear, that this is not, we're not talking about putting 900 kids into a school that used to have 600. This is an exercise on the numbers, analyzing our space, right?
Sure.
I think another thing to emphasize as Mr. Underwood speaks, or before he leaves the microphone, there's another aspect of the School of Public Health's recommendations when they talk through HVAC and ventilation. And they have an entire what-if scenario. And a scenario that they put forward is to say, if your ventilation system is not at this capacity, then here's what you should do in order to mitigate. And again, they're very, very clear, this is not about eliminating risk, it's about minimizing and making sure that you have a healthy building. Is around the mobile air purifiers that can be purchased. Mr. Underwood did an analysis of what that would require if every classroom needed a mobile air purifier. And, Mr. Underwood, I want to make sure it was approximately 1.2 million-
1.2 million dollars, correct.
1.2 million dollars, if that was determined to be necessary. Now, we haven't yet gotten to the point where we say how many you would need, but I think it's important for the community to know that if that is a requirement, that will find its way into what we say are COVID-required expenses. I don't, it's not going to be a recommendation from me that you take any way out of what would be safety, and for the community, you should know, I've not received any recommendation ever from this committee that we ever yield on any kind of safety requirement. So while you may, as a community, hear other communities going through different analyses, you may hear something from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our desire is to make sure that we provide options for families, and for every family, it's a priority of safety. So thank you, and I think that's just highlighting your point again, Mr. Dillon.
Sure, Mr. Dakota, and then Mr. Houghey.
Yeah, excuse me. A quick question, again, how many schools have had their filters changed and-
Half of them, yeah. Roughly around 16 schools have had filter changes.
Also filter changes in Lowell?
Not my department. You're welcome.
So when you say changed out, like, all the filters are done at one school?
All the classroom filters, so the custodial department is in charge of doing the classroom filters. City Lowell buys them, we replace them. We do that as part of our summer cleaning during the winter and the summer, when they're available. We've been, you know, we've been lucky enough to get those before all of this started. And it's my understanding that the rest of the schools will be done before school starts and the end of August.
So I don't, I don't want to start a city-school thing, but it's the school's responsibility to change the-
We do the, well, we do the classroom filters, there's other rooftop units that DPW does.
Right, but when the teachers' union who runs the custodian association, right?
Yep.
When they talk about safety, they're kind of talking about themselves, right?
I don't quite understand.
If the teachers' union represent the custodians, and the custodians aren't changing the filters, how do we, is there an issue there, or is there not enough filters?
We are changing the filters.
All right, but you said we only did half.
If we have them, we change them. What was that?
But we only did half?
We, the DPW only purchased half. The city purchases them, we install them. We don't buy them.
All right, so we need the other half delivered, you're saying?
We do need the half purchased and delivered.
Okay, all right. That's why I wanted to know if they were there and not installed, or if we're waiting for them to come in, so.
No, no. If we have them, we'll install them.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Houghey first, and then Ms. Darny.
Thank you, Mayor.
No stories, just-
I could almost predict what Paul Georges was going to say today. It's kind of easy, but I want to start off by saying, Mike Earl and Paul Georges, two people that I think are also very important at Lowell, because they're great union leaders, and they know what the schools need. If you look back a few years ago, when Steve Gendron and Bob Gignac was on the school committee, I was on a subcommittee for facilities at that time. And that's when the can of worms was basically open. Ms. Darny made some beautiful motions to get things in gear. And then all of a sudden, we get this new city manager, the first female ever to be running Plan E former government, and to me, and Mr. Underwood in a minute, if I'm done in a minute, can speak on what we've done as a city, what is coming down the pike for us, how many boilers are going to be fixed, how many roofs are going to be fixed, all under the city manager. I've been driving around the city lately, especially like even today, riding around, looking at all our parks, and all I see is Fort Hill improving. I did see Shed Park, a big oak tree fell down and took the backstop right out of it. I took some pictures with my grandchildren of it, but I see nothing but improvement. Now, homelessness laying downtown and stuff, that's another thing, Mayor. But as far as maintenance of our schools, I don't think, I think we're moving in a great direction under this city manager, and I also know how hard this gentleman has worked. And Mayor, you've been in the bowels of some of these schools with him, so you know how many hours he's putting in. And what can I say, other than keep on pushing to clean the schools? Now, let me say something about air conditioners. I, all I was, was a roofer and a prison guard for 40 years. I put roofs on houses, I've put many filters in a system. Even with a perfect system, that doesn't mean the virus can't get through the system. Fresh air is sometimes the best thing you can do. What we do have in this city to keep in our mind is, all of our, mostly all of our schools are built on a lot of land. And you know how we go to restaurants now? You go outside, more people are outside than are inside. So I know it's hard in the wintertime to be outside, but we might be able to get out on some cheap things, meaning, I look at the staff and I look at teachers, let me go off just for a second, and I heard one speaker-
Need to stay on point.
No, one speaker, it's the same, same issue. One, one speaker said, you know, some of our kids will be in a classroom that's 92 degrees or 94 degrees. Let me tell you something, I go in classrooms quite a bit in my lifetime, and I see some of the sharpest teachers in the world. Now, I mean it, you walk in, they get the curtains down, it's cool, it's still 92, but mentally, you think it's 75. There's some amazing teachers. They're going to take them outside if they think it's too bad. So, but right now, I'd like to hear out of Mr. Underwood, some of the things that are coming down the pike, so taxpayers know what this city manager has done for that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Darny, sure.
Thank you. Actually, it's very similar to what Mr. Houghey said, except really, my question is, I don't think anybody is surprised to hear that there's concerns around ventilation, around heating. We all know that the buildings have had issues, and we have made strides to improve it. The issue really now in front of us is, can the ventilation and the other issues we've had around heating, things that are going to impact people's safety in the buildings around this pandemic, are they going to be up to snuff? Are we going to be able to do enough? And I agree with the superintendent, I think our standards have got to be back more to the six feet than the three feet, and maybe we're looking at a model where, you know, some of the older kids are learning online at home, and the younger kids are spread out, so you don't have 26 kids in a class, you have 13, or whatever. But what are your- in a class, you have thirteen, or whatever. But what are your thoughts in terms of what you're seeing now for the status of our buildings, what you're currently doing regarding the ventilation, what the city's going to be doing, and what your thoughts are to, in terms of the safety of the air quality of those buildings?
Okay, so, I've been in this role for almost five years now. I've been in the system for almost thirty, or twenty-nine now. Jim Green works very hard. His guys work very hard. I know funds are limited. I know they're on demand. We all know they're on demand. The city knows they're on demand. So, if you want me to sit here and tell you that I think that all our schools are gonna be running with proper ventilation and heating, I won't. We haven't had it in five years. We've been putting pressure on them all along. We did a Collins report that, that identified the lack of personnel in the city, its funds, its monies. But I'm not gonna lie to anybody here and tell you that in January or in December that we're not gonna have classrooms in the district that are probably gonna be very hot. What I can tell you is, we're getting six new boilers, some new roofs, you know, with the MSBA projects. That's just one part of the program. We'll still have, I'm sure, you know, control issues, ventilation problems. That still leaves twenty other buildings in the city. You know, I said right along after we did the Collins, the city did the Collins report and spent thousands of dollars on that report, if there was gonna be any, any movement on the recommendations, we all know where it went. So, I know how hard DPW works and, and how underfunded they are, and under, under manpowered they are. I also know we have a superintendent who last year, flat out said to the school, uh, city that, hey, if these buildings aren't ready for school, we ain't starting. I'm confident that he'll do the same thing this year. If we're not safe in those buildings, I'm very confident this administration will do what's needed, whether it's pressure or to put their foot down. I know the city will be doing everything they can. I know they, you know, that they have the best wishes and good, we all want the same things. You know, I don't think there's anybody, whether in this city, or the school department, or administration, that doesn't wanna do the right things. Being in this position for five years, I know there's a lot of different barriers in our ways. Funding, manpower, knowledge, you know, all those things factor. So the answer to your question is, we're gonna continue to work hard and put pressure on everybody that we can. But I think many of our buildings will be in the same position we are last year, and the year before, and to continue. And that's, that's just being honest. You know, as a facilities director, I'd love to say, nope, we're on it. It's gonna be fixed. You know, everybody's gonna be done. But I certainly don't wanna put any eyes on Jim Green either, or anybody in his department. Those guys work very hard for the limited people that they have. So, I, you know, that's as truthful as I can be with you on that issue.
Mr. Dillon?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can't skip out on a city-school conversation without talking about the city needing to do what they need to do to fund our maintenance of our city buildings. I mean, I, I wanna know what the air quality is like in our building, 'cause Mr. Underwood was too nice about it. That our HVAC systems are crap, and there is not good circulation in our buildings. And it was an issue before this. So I'm glad that it is coming. I was talking about this two years ago during the high school debate, in this room. Like, you know, the, the ventilation systems are, and it, it comes down to the city. The city hasn't done its job over a long, long period of time. I'm, I, I'd love to have air quality tests done in our firehouses. It would be embarrassing. But our schools are more important right now. Like, we need, I, I would, I would love to have an air quality test done in every single one of our buildings before we send our kids back. And if this isn't a good time to do it, when is it? 'Cause, you know, we talk about like, oh, yeah, we're doing enough. Well, and yes, the manager's come in and made sure that we've been on top of things that we're supposed to already be on top of anyway. So, but we're not doing better, really, because we're not putting, we're not giving him more staff. It's, they are way understaffed. And, and it's been, some, at some point, the city has to take accountability for that. Because when we go to the state, and the state comes back with recommendations, and then the city just, I don't know, kinda explains it away, it seems like. And so it doesn't seem like anybody's holding the city accountable for these buildings. And it's just gonna keep going. I feel bad for Mr. Underwood having to stand here and be polite, but that's the reality of what we got going on right now, is, does anybody know, maybe the last time, that there has been a test of air quality, or a test of, of systems themselves?
So last, last year, we had the state come in two different times to Lowell High School and did a air quality test in all three buildings. They found no pollutants, any back, no back there. They didn't find anything other than higher levels in carbon dioxide, which is directly related to exhausts in the school. One of their things, you know, the high school's in a very unique situation where they have the old-fashioned, big, huge windows that you can open and get fresh air. And some of our smaller schools, like the, you know, the Daly, not the Daly, but the Bailey, the Maury, they're, they're climate-controlled buildings that have windows that open very little because they rely on their ventilation system to, to do their work for them. So, but yes, we had the green outh done last, I think it was last year. Time goes by so fast. I'm not sure if it was last year or the school year before that. The high school, I think there was one other school that the state came in and looked at. If, I think it was the Maury, I'm sorry, it was the Merklin School. My, my memory was losing me there. The Merklin School. And, and they came back with, you know, with good results from the, from the tests. But again, you know, one other thing to note is, they won't give you sufficient readings if they come into a building that's empty. You really have to have it occupied. You have to have people in there. You have to have the carbon dioxide levels, and just, just the pollutants walking around on the rugs. So unfortunately, you don't get a lot of, you know, good out of having them come into an empty building.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Uh, first, I wanna say thank you, Mr. Underwood, for you and your team going in and doing this work, which is really, sounds like it's really come down to, it's a data request by DESI that we're working to comply with. But I'm sure, I, this is a lot of work, so thank you.
Yeah, you know, and I wanna just acknowledge Paul Saincy, who's my, the area facilities manager. He put a lot of time into this, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of visits to different classrooms, as we all did. But, um, great work on this, this report from him.
Um, so my question actually relates to windows, because I'm just wondering if that's part of the analysis that's going on with the buildings, whether, whether we are working to even see what windows open, what windows are able to stay open, because, right, fresh air is such an important part of this, whether it's through the ventilation system, or just having access to open a window. Is that, is that something that the city is doing as part of going through buildings to see what windows do open? Do they stay open without external supports?
We haven't, we haven't put any attention in that. It's, it's good that you mentioned that. I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Jim Green. We'll start getting some information put together on those. Many of our schools, fourteen of our schools that were built in ninety-two, ninety-three, of course, those windows are gonna be more operational than, let's say, the Cardinal, or the Riverside, or so-and-so. It's Lowell High School, of course. Lowell High School windows are, they're in bad shape, but the cost and the fact that we're gonna be building a new school, you know, five years, is not something that would probably be addressed. So, but, you're welcome.
Mr. Dakota?
Alright. At the, at the Merklin School, four years ago, right, right about four years ago, when we took this job over, they had, I think, forty-two broken windows there. And the kids were breaking them faster than we could replace them. So the city had come in, and they were replacing them with Plexiglas. And the Plexiglas was glued in there. And that's kinda the way it stayed for a long time. Recently, we, we outfitted that building with cameras. And two years ago, we put thirty-six thousand dollars with the cameras in that building. We haven't, we had two broken windows since. We caught both kids, and they haven't broken windows since. So, but, but yes, a lot of the problems with those windows are, there were so many of them broken, that at a thousand dollars apiece, which is roughly what they are, about nine hundred bucks, you're talking thirty-six thousand dollars to replace the windows. So it's just something that they've been slowly getting to, one here and there.
Mr. Hoey?
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. And the last thing I wanna say is, what I feel, what we've done as a city, I gotta speak up for the city, especially since Eileen Donahue has been here. The city's, to me, is moving in a great direction. I've been down at the MSBA when we, we got all that money to renovate our high school, to make it the best place in the state. I'm hoping still that happens. And I feel like that's, it's, it's not something that you should do, but when you're gonna drop so much money in a brand-new school, if you start dropping a million here, or another million here at the high school, it starts to really hurt. Now, that doesn't mean we should send kids to school and it's not safe. But at the same time, if they keep replacing the filters, and at Lowell High, I know it pretty well, in, in the wintertime, they open all the windows. They leave them open, because it gets, some rooms will get too much heat, and so the kids will open up the windows, and then they keep the windows open. And the next day, the school will be twenty below zero. So, but I look at all the children from Lowell High School working at the Market Basket in Stadium Plaza. We all try to stay safe in that place. They're all high school kids, most of them. And I don't see everybody dying off. I just don't see it. In Massachusetts, I think our numbers are good. I think we've done a great job in the city of Lowell. I still wear a mask. I got one here. But we're far enough away, and we're not hugging anymore. I'm not even hugging my wife anymore. The life, my life has changed dramatically over this stuff. Yeah, that's okay. But I'm serious. I think the city of Lowell, and I, I'm not trying to take anything away from Mr. Dunne. He's new, and, uh, new on the school committee. He's a fireman. He knows what dangerous things are to breathe in, and what do you think, a lot of firemen are getting cancer. So, am I for checking the air quality? Bet your life I am. And check our water quality. Constantly, we should be checking that. But under the leadership of, I, I believe, Mr. Underwood, since we've had him, especially at the high school, he's done the best he can. It's almost an impossible job, especially when you haven't maintained things for thirty years. And I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. But in Lowell, we're very lucky, Mayor. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Alright. Everybody good with questions on the air?
Thanks, everybody. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Underwood. It is a thankless job at a time when you're trying to manage buildings during a pandemic. So thank you for your work, and thank you for your team's work. Appreciate it. That takes us to another, no less easy, but it does set us up with a lot of the information that'll flow right into a conversation about transportation, because I think the same rules apply. We know what the CDC is telling us. We are seeming to continue to wait to see if someone eases the guidelines. We have no way by which to say that an easing of guidelines means that it's all of a sudden gonna be more safe. The CDC has presented and provided guidelines that would suggest that our largest school buses at max capacity can transport thirteen students. That is significantly different from the average capacity of approximately sixty students per bus. Now, our, all of our buses aren't at max capacity, but nonetheless, you're talking, you can see the vast difference when you start to talk about social distancing. The way that this conversation also applies is because it is often about circulation, and our buses require largely windows down to get ventilation. Well, as soon as it rains, what happens to that system of ventilation for our school buses? The first freeze. So we could, as a school district, we can wait to see if DESI will provide additional guidance beyond the CDC. I think we should be extremely transparent with our community to say that if schools were gonna open today, and the pandemic were in its circumstance as it is today, it's highly unlikely that we can provide transportation the way we've provided transportation, and do so with a straight face saying it's safe. There's gonna be some significant differences in the parameters by which we offer transportation as a school district, because every time a child comes in contact with another child, we know that the risks increase. Our job to maintain and ensure safety is going to be to mitigate and minimize that risk for all of those children who are in the school that they'll be entering, for those teachers that'll be in the school that they're entering, and for the community members that they will be going home to engage with. And right now, the guidance from the CDC, thirteen students on our largest school buses. In order to provide transportation at the same level that we are right now, there simply aren't enough buses that can be manufactured across this country. Now, fortunately, as a school district, we're in a city here that geographically is far more confined than other school districts around the country. So you have, as a committee at your disposal, different ways that we can look at this. And we're gonna have to look at this differently. I don't have a plan to recommend for you as a school committee, but the community should know that the school committee has been immersed deeply in conversations about transportation. This committee is not interested, and please, Mr. Mayor, committee members, catch me if I'm speaking out of turn, doing anything, again, that is in any way gonna jeopardize the safety of any member of our community. And I think it's important, at this juncture, for us to make sure we share with the community that, quite frankly, transportation as it had been provided is highly, highly unlikely unless we have a significant change of circumstance with the pandemic. Now, we don't know, again, what that will look like. It looks very different right now than it looked two months ago. But again, we do have to notify our community probably within months' time ahead of our first day of school, with what schooling will look like. And we know that a lot of our families make decisions based on transportation. Now, the current survey data that we have, the respondents to that survey, if we extrapolate that out, suggests that if we provided choices to families, ten percent change or shift based on whether transportation's available, as to whether a family would feel comfortable going to school versus virtual. If that choice was afforded to them, and it was a choice that said, we have in school, but you won't get transportation, ten percent more would opt for virtual. The, and then it's roughly three to five percent who would be requesting a different school assignment, because they can't transport to school, and they would need a school within a walkable route. The walkable route is a different configuration, different distance, depending on the age of a child. But again, we should keep that in mind, as a school district, that sixty-eight percent of our families are suggesting, provide out as many options available to them that can be done safely, and that would be their preference. So that's the data we have. I'm gonna move quickly through these slides. It basically says that. But I think here, what you're gonna find throughout your colleagues across Massachusetts, particularly those that are in larger geographic areas, that they're waiting for an easing of guidelines. I just would provide caution to the committee. You heard from our speakers. I'm hearing it from community members. An easing of guidelines doesn't ease anxiety or, or increase a sense of safety. People are, our families are starting to raise concern about the motivation around guidelines. And I just want the committee to hear what I've heard. I would certainly like to hear what you've heard as well. This is gonna be a tough decision for us, and this committee's often in tough decisions around transportation, getting youngsters to school, getting students to school. And that's the best data we have in front of us right now. I don't have a recommendation for you on this one. That's, again, just the end of our analysis stage. We gotta go into design.
Sure, Mr. Arnie?
Just a quick question. When you're saying thirteen students per large school bus, is that less than a student per seat?
Yes.
Because that would be twenty-five, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's using a distance between, so, Mr. Dakota, our transportation director's done an assessment based on the CDC's provided guidelines for school transportation, utilizing the space capacity and sizes of our buses. And that's the number, the average capacity he's providing to us based on that analysis. We always have to use a standard. And again, we don't assume that we are the standard setter when it comes to a pandemic and ensuring safety. So we use a standard provided. This is based on the CDC standard that Mr. Dakota then analyzed, our current, our current fleet.
Can I suggest also, like, we, so you're looking through for guidance for us, right?
Yeah, it's helpful to hear the feedback you've heard from, I think at this stage, we've completed as much analysis as is gonna be completed. Now we'll move into a phase of design, getting feedback, input, additional input from the community. And I think you all, as committee members, as representatives, have been hearing feedback, too. So it's helpful to hear that feedback from you as well. Because again, Mr. Mayor, I think the first week of August is our, the deadline we're setting for ourselves, so that we can release something to the community, so long as we don't change the first day of school.
Alright, so, my thoughts at this point are, that last year, you know, it must've been very difficult from March till school ended to teach virtual, you know, not have any kids in school. So, and maybe I'm way out of line, but should we be looking at juniors and seniors learning online, sophomores and freshmen in the building, that's it, and then just every other week for elementary and middle school? Because, I mean, half a year is gonna be better than not, than teaching online for the whole year. I don't think, not that anybody worked, you know, any less harder, but it was difficult to, to capture the kids and to motivate them and to get them working, right? So, and every other week schedule, you know, might be the better educational choice than just trying to catch everybody at home and not even be in the building. So maybe, I don't know, does that sound like something we should? So, maybe, I don't know, does that sound like something we should be looking at? Are there any studies for that?
Yeah.
That's the way I'm kind of looking at it, because you're going to have to space the kids out. We're going to have to be honest, like you said, with transportation and just say, you know, there's no transportation to keep the kids safe, but we can space them out in school if you can get them to school.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When Ms. Desmond and Dr. Gillery will take the committee through in the latter part of the presentation, the three different scenarios. What you're referring to, Mr. Mayor, is what we currently call a hybrid scenario. It is definitely moving in a direction here, as you can hear from the data, that it's highly unlikely, absent some type of vaccine or change of environment here with the pandemic, that we're going to be in 100% of our kids in school on day one. It also, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. It's also seeming highly unlikely that all of our parents are finding high levels of benefit from online learning. So, if you put those two together, and you're saying some will be learning online, some would be learning in the building, that's what we're referring to as a hybrid scenario. The very scenario that you're talking about with the two different cohorts that has been analyzed by the task force, which includes principals, teachers, and parents. What are the cohorts? How do you look at them? We've gone everything from maybe optional cohorts where families can opt into on, online learning full-time or in-person learning full-time. Could you do cohorts where you're looking at age groups? The cohorts of week on, week off, as, meaning week on campus, week off campus is another. You'll hear some school districts are even starting to look at every other day cohorts. All of those cohort modeling, and Ms. Desmond will take you through, when we get to the hybrid scenario, the different ones that have been viewed, and certainly if the committee is hearing feedback that other cohort modeling or scenarios should be something we look at, we can look at those two, Mr. Mayor. But your sense here is right, that where, if we had to make a decision right now, which fortunately we don't, again, the data's showing we can't, we're not going to have 100% of our kids in buildings, which means somebody is going to be learning online. And right now, we have about 30% to 40% of our families that are raising their hand and saying, for them, virtual learning makes sense. You also have 60% to 70% that say they need to be on, in school every day. Well, in an optional scenario, you know actually what that works out to be. If you do the math on the space, you actually have with six feet of distancing, you have enough space for about 65% to 70% of your students. Now, again, district-wide numbers versus school-level numbers, that changes. And then if we provide out, then more definitive information about transportation, we also know that'll start to change parents' decisions about whether online. So, you have a lot of possibilities when it comes to hybrid, and it certainly is seeming like that's going to be more likely than a fact of full-on campus learning, despite what you might be hearing on the news channels or wherever else you might be gaining information.
Sure. Mr. Dakota, and then Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The hybrid version creates an issue with our staff. How are we going to have our teachers working with kids during the day or, and doing online work? Because we can't hire a whole nother bunch of teachers to deal with that issue. So, there's that, there's that part of that, that on paper, it looks great, but in reality, it's going to cost money, and we don't have the money. So, I don't know. Again, no easy solutions here.
Right, right. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Superintendent, don't, I mean, it sounds to me like the way that you're talking through these numbers, we may be solving some issues just with how our community is going to react to going back to school, because it sounds like we're going to have a certain fraction of, of our regular students who are actually in the building. So, that is conducive to our spacing, right? Like, we're going to have less kids in the building, and some kids are still going to want to learn remotely. So, I think that, to Mr. Dakota's comment, like, figuring that portion out is probably important, but is it oddly falling together a little bit?
If you, the, the challenge, yeah, if you, if you look at it in most optimistic terms, Mr. Dillon, the challenge with that is as we start to move down then to a school level, because around this table, we talk about district level, but for a family, it's what's happening at the school. And if you start to disaggregate it down by school level, do those same, does that same proportionality continue to follow, and does the same, still continue to follow through there? But, yeah, you also need that same proportionality to work out with, UTL's been kind enough, we ran the parents' survey, they ran the teacher's survey. So, they're still compiling their data, but they are finding a proportion of teachers that are saying online teaching would be a top preference, and then other teachers that are saying in-person teaching is where they need to come. So, you could very well, we could come back to you later with some data that might say that, that things just by a jigsaw nature here turn out a certain way, but I want to hold-
Well, I mean, by no means perfect, but-
Yeah.
You know, as we're talking about the results of parents' surveys, and I feel, feel like a hybrid, some sort of, some people at home, like you talked about, is staying flexible and giving parents the option to what they think is best for their child. I, I don't know. It's, I think it's just becoming a little bit clearer. The obvious concern about any situation is how can our teachers possibly be expected to do all of this added supposed work? I mean, streaming, I mean, what are we talking about? Do we have even thoughts about it?
Yeah. In an ideal way, and having been a classroom teacher myself, we can have teachers that focus on one or the other.
Sure.
Now, the devil's in the details on how you do that.
Course.
You know, if we're going to, you know, and remember what I said, was we go through analyzing to designing to operationalizing. Once we get to operationalizing, how's a teacher going to be focusing on all of these things all at once and to do them well? Really, really difficult, particularly if they're also then focused on their own basic needs of safety and so on, and our teachers are dealing with all kinds of circumstances that we aren't even aware. There's been some real trauma here and some real, real needs that have to be met, not only for our kids, but also our educators. So, if we can have a place within our hybrid scenario where we have teachers who can focus remotely and other teachers that can focus on campus-
I've thought about this one too.
-full-time, and, you know, you can think about how you operationalize that through training and scheduling and so on. It's something that's being considered, but it would require some other things to fall into place, and I want to make sure I don't get anybody's hopes up that this is like, kind of, all working through. We've got a lot of work and some additional feedback we've got to gather. I do want to make sure that UTL has an opportunity to fully analyze their data. They are going, they'll share that certainly with the committee as they have. And what you'll see over the next course of the couple of weeks, Ms. Phillips is currently working with her team to make sure that we do a significant amount of community discussions, community vetting. Surveys are one form of eliciting input, but just open dialogue, forums in different ways, so that we can kind of see if this is actually starting to hash out before we release a full plan.
I think we're doing excellent. I guess if you're looking for feedback, I think we're kicking butt in this scenario right now. You've been prepared all along the way, so, and I, I think we're as prepared as any district can be right now, so, let's, let's keep doing it.
Sure. And before Ms. Doherty speaks, you know, Mr. Dakota and Mr. Dillon, you guys taught, you know, another way to look at it, maybe it doesn't work, maybe it does. Maybe the teachers in the classroom with the camera on them, teaching to the kids at home-
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Stream the class.
Right. Just stream the class, and that's, you know, and do the best we can with that.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Sure. Ms. Doherty first?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that the hybrid model does seem to be the best-case scenario. I also really like the idea of giving options to our community, meaning our staff, our teachers, and our parents and children, and students, because, you know, you have, you might have a teacher who's coming home to a compromised family member, and for that teacher to be in a classroom is really putting loved ones or themselves at risk. So, we need to be, you know, cognizant of all these aspects, and I think that this idea of, you know, what percentage want to teach online, what percentage want to be in the building, what percentage of students can get a ride from their family member. So, all those things could factor in to make it more palatable. And I guess I want to just throw, I, I have not seen the proposal, but I was told that the Mass Teachers Association sent a proposal to DESI that talks about four phases of opening, and I don't know if any of our task forces have looked at that. But what appealed to me about it is that before the students arrive, there's some serious professional development that has to happen for our staff, right? So, that would be professional development for that team that wants to be in the building, and for the team that wants to be online, and maybe some collaboration between them. And I think we might have to broaden our idea of so much being school-based. Maybe it's more like, okay, how many first graders want to be in the building? You know, or, and again, thinking about the online aspect may be more suitable for the older students who can sit at a computer and work, as opposed to a first grader who needs an adult with them in the room, right? So, all these, and it's, I know it's very complex, I don't need to be all over the place, but I think that there's some good information about this proposal that the Mass Teachers Association came up with, again, because we all are working towards the same goals as Mr. Underwood said. You know, we all want the same thing. So, how do we get there? And then the other part of it that I thought was really important, not only time before the students get there for professional development, our staff, but time for training of our parents and our students. Whether you're going to be an online kid or you're going to be an in-the-building kid, things are different. You've got to wear a mask now, no, you know, hugging Johnny in the playground, all these things that will need to be built into the system. And, you know, I know this is going to cost money and things like that, but I think that we, you know, if we're going to be responsible, we've got to, as you said, keep safety first, but I think we can also start to look outside the box and see, how can we provide options, and how could that actually provide solutions for us? Like, if we don't, if we're not busing as many kids, because some are choosing to stay home, or, you know, because we've changed, you know, the walking routes or whatever, is that going to then enable us to do the transportation for those kids who want to be there who can't get a ride? So-
I think those are good points, and one thing to add before we, we're going to sequence into the summer program and curriculum development, but one thing to, other to mention, and Ms. Desmond and her team have also been hard at work, and one thing they're working to build out is the potential for us to have a district-wide online school, where you wouldn't look at remote as a school-based scenario, but you might actually be able to offer a whole nother school choice for families through an online school that Ms. Desmond is working to analyze and assess, that we could then operate, and you can think now, if you start thinking ahead, a lot easier logistically to operationalize a school choice that's an online school, even beyond the fact that you can actually do it better, because you're not flipping back and forth, and we can have a focused team that's, that's doing that kind of work. And I'll tell you, you know, this is kind of, you learn, you learn from some challenges as well. You know, every closed door opens up another. An online alternative school, even outside of a pandemic, may be something that this school committee wants to consider keeping going forward, not, not the model that we all heard of, the challenges that we were having before, but when you do it well, it's a fit for some kids. It should never be something that everyone is compelled to do, and that's unfortunately where we were with the pandemic. But we have a lot of families that you see that choose our statewide virtual charters and so on. We don't have that option here, but this is forcing us to consider that, and that's something that Ms. Desmond and her team are currently looking at, whether it's feasible for us to design and build out with the short runway in front of us. Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, I'll move right to some of the work Ms. Desmond's been doing, or, I'm sorry, I see a hand in front of me, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sure. One thing, some of the feedback I'm getting is, we're doing a lot of talking, and the slide's up on the TV, people can't see who's speaking. It's a little confusing. So, do we actually need this? We're kind of jumping all around. Do we need this up on the screen? Can we just talk about it, or is it easier for the committee to see this on the screen, or can you follow from your packets?
I have my clock going down.
Because, I mean, we are kind of all over the place. We already spent an hour and a half, and we're only, not even halfway through it, so. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reflect on just what we have been talking about, and I refer to it as the new abnormal, I think that another issue that, that aspect of the, the hybrid version is, again, we have a very experienced staff that are reconsidering coming back into the schools because of their susceptibility and, and their issues that they are more susceptible at, that particular, and I refuse to use the word age, but the more experienced staff. And, and then the, creating the, the streaming, do we have the equipment? Does, do all the schools have the equipment for, to do that? And what would the cost be for that? So, there, there are a lot of-
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of questions.
Oh, God.
Does the city have the capacity to, you know, is there enough capacity on the, the cable lines or however you stream it, you know, to, to do, you know, the whole city of Lowell streaming? So, who knows?
I'm going to take the opportunity, because Ms. Martin usually hammers me when I use sports analogies, but Mr. Ho, he always reminds me when he calls me up. He said, "Just remember, you know, you're going into the third period, and you're down by two." And that's the way I'm looking at all of this. So, I, I plan to give it my best. I know our team's going to give it our best. It could be overwhelming if we view it that way. We're choosing not to view it that way. I think on behalf of our community, we've, we've got to just charge ahead. I think you're right, Mr. Dakota. When you start looking at the many steps, so that, we're going to raise the flagpoles that we need today. Tomorrow, we have a different set of flagpoles that are going to be raised, and we're going to keep moving ahead, and that's why we've set the deadline for the first week of August for us, because there's certainly a possibility of paralysis through analysis here. We've just got to take what we know and move forward. I can shift the microphone over to Ms. Desmond and Dr. Gillery. Two important things. They're going to start moving a little bit quicker, because these are conversations you've been a part of for some time. Remember, you just received an update on the different task forces?
Yeah.
There's been one question that's come up quite often from this committee and others in the community, is what do we do about all of the quote-unquote "learning loss," the lost learning time? How do we plan for that? Ms. Desmond and her team have done yeoman's work around redesigning, remapping, summer programming, and our curriculum maps going into next year, in addition to all of this. This is kind of one of your more, another add to your list, Mr. Dakota. So, Ms. Desmond, if you can quickly move through that, which is new information for the committee, and then move right into the update on the various scenarios with Dr. Gillery, that would be great.
Thank you, Superintendent Boyd. So, to elaborate on the point, typically, we have a summer program of 16 sites. Based on the fact that 21st century funding was not optimally utilized during the closure because we were closed, we were able to roll those, those funds into extensive summer programming to help make up for some of the missed learning of our students during the school year. So, we ended up putting together 23 programs versus 16. We've been able to service almost 3,000 students compared to our typical 1,500 over our typical summer sessions. I want to note that Carolyn Rochelo has been, you know, working on extending programs that would allow for us to support students that may have missed some of the learning during the year. So, we brought together school principals, Ms. Rochelo, Mr. Lovato, our special education director, and myself, and we really looked at what we could do to support students differently. Some of the, just quickly, some of the programming that we are engaging in that we had not done in the past is middle school intervention, which is supporting students that maybe were not as engaged during the closure. I also want to mention that Jill Rothschild has also been very, has been an active member of this committee as well. We are create, we created an eighth to ninth grade program to help students that were able to engage in some programming that they may have missed in eighth grade, to prepare them for some of the rigors of ninth grade coursework. We also have a high school credit recovery program going on for students that missed some credits during this time, and an English learner academy. So, you know, again, we're hitting 3,000 students versus 1,500. So, I think that that is, is a testament to all of the hard work that everybody has engaged in, to look to see how we can support kids differently. The curriculum team also has developed a curriculum calendar. It, it's out for some feedback from school leaders currently, but this calendar is different from the calendars in the past, because we've had to really look at what was interrupted during the closure, and then also look at what sort of supplementary work needs to be done at the start of the school year. So, I won't go into too much detail there, because we will have a, a more detailed report later on, I think at our next school committee meeting in August. Moving into the work that the task force has done for looking at what some of our options are for the start of the school year, I just want to point out that some of the things that were considered for all three models were the, the changes in curriculum mapping, the, the needs of our students in social, emotional learning, where kids have been out of school for so long and not necessarily engaged with all of the adults that they typically engage with every day. Universal instructional platforms that we're going to need to consider for the start of the school- the school year, attendance and standardized school times, and also standard communication systems with families. So all of those things were embedded into all of the models that we were looking at moving forward. I'm going to hand the mic over to Dr. Gillery.
Thank you, Chief Desmond. Again, we want to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of the people that were, staff members, families, community that was involved in phase one of this process. We had approximately 75 individuals engaging in that level of development, and so we'll share a little bit about, more about that. Phase two is actually launching today, and I'm pleased to report that we have, at this juncture, 162 individuals that have volunteered to engage in the deeper planning that Dr. Boyd has already shared with you that's going to be happening. So at this point, for our full in-person scenario, the idea is that phase one of this process really looked at the higher levels. Phase two is going to get down into putting more flesh on the bone and more details around how we start to plan for coming back in each of these particular scenarios. So the full in-person scenario, again, we want to make sure that our health and safety recommendations that are provided to us, that we are adhering to those. There have been recommendations made in terms of, or guidance being put in place or recommended for PPE as well as sanitation. Of course, social distancing requirements, limiting the mixing of cohorts of students, that's very important to how we manage or mitigate that movement so that we can make sure that we try to, again, minimize that. Guidance for our special populations or our higher-needs students, and then how do we optimize learning for our higher-risk students? Our full, our remote scenario planning, again, looks at how do we devise schedules that adhere to time on learning requirements? We want to make sure that we also treat or have plans for our social, emotional learning needs as well as the arts, the allied arts. We want to make sure that, to the point made around professional development, we want to make sure that remote learning pedagogy is applied, that we're using some of the best practices or the next practices in those areas. We want to make sure that our curricular materials are well utilized, but then also take the opportunity to engage in some newer learning or flipped classrooms in that particular model. We want to make sure that the technology-based programs that we already own, that we're utilizing those, so that there's not an uptick or fresh start required in that. Certainly adhering to the professional development plannings that are needed, and then again, what are our, our higher-needs populations, what do they require? So we want to make sure that provisions are put in place for those students and families.
For the hybrid, hybrid scenario planning, we're looking at on-campus and at-home cohort models, and so there's varying cohort models where it could be day on, day off, couple days on, couple days off, a week on, a week off. So we're just looking and exploring all of those models. We're looking at synchronized class models where, as we talked about, live streaming may occur, where someone is, is teaching to a group in front of them, and then also that's being streamed to someone at home that might want to engage in that same work. They're also looking at planning instructional units that prioritize independent work for home and essential instruction and feedback from the instructors at school. And then also coordinating with outside agencies to look at childcare for families and coordinating schedules for students in one family as per the family's preference. So all of those things are being considered when developing some of the hybrid modeling for us to consider. As Dr. Gillery mentioned, we've moved into phase two for the month of July with the hopes of having more, or tightened plans for the end of July. And right now, they're, they have 10 subgroups comprised of a wide cross-section of employees and then also parents. And the refinements that they're considering right now are the various levels and content areas for curriculum. Also, they're looking at how we're communicating with family members in our community, how we're going to develop assessments and gradings and reporting out to families, health protocols, et cetera. So all of these pieces will hopefully have a tightened plan by the end of July.
And that's an important date. As a committee, you're going to be asked to approve all three plans so that they can be submitted to the state. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is gathering all of the approved plans, committee-approved plans from every school district in all three scenarios. You're not going to implement all three at once. We have to make a decision as a community. Which of those plans do we start the year with? But it's important to, I think, recognize, at any given moment, based on the information around us as we learned, we may be in a different plan than what we initially started to be in because of the way the pandemic's moving. We have a little bit of a joke, unfortunately, moving through our superintendent groups because the commissioner has taken to using the terms nimble and pivot so often that when he uses those terms, you can remember back to your college days of games that used to be played. So I think you should be expecting to hear that among your school committee groups as well. We are, you're going to see in our next budget presentation that we're going to be recommending to you that this not be your only meeting during July, that we start to calendar out some meeting dates for next week and the week after. So where you see here, July 31st, that's our submission to DESI. It's not necessarily our opening plan. One of them ultimately will become our opening plan.
So, Ms. Clark?
So I just want to say thank you again for all of this work. The universal items to all three scenarios, I think, are critically important, and I'm so glad to see it, and I think the things here, especially the communication, is so key, and picking a universal platform and a way for families to really just know the two-way communication to teachers and one place to go for information. I do appreciate, I saw a Facebook post today, I think it was today, about, are you receiving our district emails? Because I, one of the questions or feedback I've received is, especially as we move into this phase two, how were people made aware of the opportunity to participate in, in this, in the subgroups that are now moving into phase two? I'm glad to see 162 people are participating, but I definitely heard from some community members to say, where, how, how would I have found out about that? How could I, how can I participate? So that's just a question, but I just, I know we're just continuing to move that, move the needle on communication, so, thank you. And, but it is a question. How did, how are folks able to raise their hand and, and say that they want to participate?
So I think for that aspect of it, it's certainly letting us know. We've, I think we put out a robocall as well as an email.
Okay.
That went out, and we'll make sure that we also put it out in social media as well.
Great, thank you.
When the calls go out, are they, are they able to say city of law or school department or something, do you know?
Yeah, that's been, you know, we've, we started looking into that. It was more complex than you might think. I'll have to check back to whether we resolved it. I definitely know that our IT department had been working through that as to whether we could, it's with the phone carrier and how the phone carrier defines because it's, they were defining it for some carriers were defining us as spam, I think, or something like that.
Right, that was a problem.
And it was an unknown, it was, and it was, the complexity was the phone carrier themselves had to change their rules despite what our requests were. So I can follow back on it. Mike, I see you nodding your head. Do you happen to know if we were able to resolve that, or you're just nodding your head knowing that was the problem?
I don't believe we were able to resolve it, but that is the issue. It's mainly the phone carrier themselves where what they flag as spam based on one call's going out and based on the fact that it's coming from Aspen, not a direct phone line, so it's a little difficult to that.
Yes, their algorithm that they're going to change. We'll keep, we'll keep digging on and keep pushing on it, Mr. Mayor, but we're definitely, we do understand that to be a challenge for some families, seeing it as that when they see it on their caller ID.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to the, the remote scenario, question about that. Have you been discussing testing and accountability issues as to how we're going to be testing kids? Because we can't go with this pass-fail stuff. This is, that's got to stop. So, I mean, so that, I think that's a big, a big thing. And on that same page, I hope all of the principals have seen the allied arts being necessary and, and not be on that cutting table for convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to back what Mr. Dylan said. I think you have us prepared very well, what's coming up, but I think DESI and the rest of the people, and especially the governor, I think he has to come out pretty soon telling us about some stuff. And I was on the phone with Senator Kennedy, and I know you were yesterday, I believe you had me beat this time. He hasn't been answering my phone calls all the time because I drive him crazy. But there's still some hope, believe it or not, there's still hope. At the federal level, I know, no one wants to believe that, but there is hope. What I want you to do for me, Mr. Superintendent, is keep an eye on all these kids that have already been told there's going to be no football, no hockey, or no basketball in the fall sports. I think it's awful early to say that to kids. I drove around Carley. I know tomorrow the bids are coming out on the city re-turfing that field, somewhere around $600,000 they're going to spend up there. I was in the woods, looking at everybody, stretching and working out, and I'm really excited, and I think a lot of our children are excited. But that's something we got to focus on. I mean, our dropout rate at the high school, I mean, he brings up allied arts, and I'm all for that also, but football, basketball, hockey, you're telling kids, it's all over and ain't going to happen? I don't like that attitude at all in this state. I think our numbers are good. I think we have to start talking positive about opening up a little bit more. I know we live in a democratic state, but our numbers are really good, and I feel that the dropout rate, where would those kids go if we don't play football? I know my nephew just got, or my cousin just got burnt with baseball last season, seniors, couldn't play. It was devastating to them. And I don't know, Mr. Superintendent, through you, the mayor, to the superintendent, you heard Ed Kennedy a little bit, and you could probably articulate it a lot better than I could about what he thinks is going to come down the pike here. I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I think.
Well, can we just save that for the budget? We've got to get through this update, if you don't mind. So are we pretty much done for the planning? You know, we've got to plan for.
Yeah, let me.
Scenarios and see what the best is.
Yeah, let me take you really quickly through your packet. So the, the next slide is, we use a tracking system to track all of our schools to opening. Those of you that remember from the committee from prior, from last year, our school opening process, that worked very well for us to track the data and for us to signal and share with you where all of our schools are. We plan to implement that system again this year. The areas on there, this is just a sample snapshot, will obviously change based on the scenario that we work to implement. Schools will need different things to be ready, so you'll start to see those. An example will be those filter checks that we heard are so important. That'll start to be there, so you could start to track our schools towards opening by a red-yellow-green system that you'll get updates as a committee, and we'll work to update the community. The last slide is just our next steps, which I'll leave open to the committee. Ms. Phillips is prepared to share the types of community outreach and engagement that we're planning over the next couple of weeks. Again, it's a short runway, but that is the nature of the pandemic. I'll leave that open to you, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like her to provide more information on that. That's what our next steps are, largely a significant amount of community outreach, community engagement. So that way, when you approve the plans, it's not your plan, it's our community's plans for opening.
Yeah, I mean, sure, if you want to just run through the slide, but I mean, you know, we don't even know, the next two weeks are going to be up in the air, and, I mean, do we even know what private schools are doing? Are they going out of business? Because, I mean, it all comes down to students for them. If they have to go half-capacity, why would they even open?
We are receiving a significant number of calls from others asking us what we're doing. We tend to be, as the largest city within the valley, we tend to be the one that makes a decision first that I think others then look to often, particularly around, Mr. Mayor, our private schools and our charters, if you recall, kind of snow days almost, were looked to. What do we do, they do. I haven't heard from them that they're ready to take the first step on this. I would expect instead that the committee likely will make a decision, and then they'll adjust in that, that plan for theirs, but that's just an assumption. We've received calls from them asking what we're looking to do. We haven't heard from others that they've got a model ready for opening that we can share with, with us.
I would imagine private schools like Bishop Girdon, Central Catholic, they must just all be switching to online. They've got to stay open, and it's, if they have half their students, I don't see how they stay open. So I would imagine they must be going full force with, you know, a new way of high school, online learning, right? It's the only way to survive. So, all right. So why don't we have Ms. Latifah go through this last slide, and we'll get to the budget?
Sure. So, school committee members, communication's going to be critical over the next couple of months, so we do want to increase our communication around this happening and all the opportunities for input. So that includes communicating via social media, email, and our Connect Ed calls, but we also want to make sure that we're not just creating a one-size-fits-all plan and that we really have reached out to families to make sure it's going to meet their needs. So we are looking at a, at a second survey targeting our linguistically diverse families, because you see from the survey, we did have a lot of the surveys completed in English, but we do want to make sure that, that our other large linguistic populations have given us that feedback. We're going to be hosting forums across the city via Zoom, which isn't ideal, but that's the way we've been doing it. We want to make sure that, that we don't just have general forums, but that there are some targeted convenings for special populations such as our special education parent advisory committee, our English learner parent advisory committee, to make sure that we're getting, again, that feedback on, on serving all of our students. And we're looking to have a school opening plan released the first week of August. We initially said August 1st, but we always want to build in time for our translation of our documents as well, but we are targeting that first week of, of August.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes that presentation, but there's almost like a part A, part B. The next presentation is the budget. You've got to fund a plan in order to implement a plan, so do you want me to move right into that presentation, or should we pause for more questions, Mr. Mayor?
I would just roll right through the budget update.
All right, thank you. So I'll start with Mr. Howie's question. Yes, our local delegation has been highly responsive. Couldn't speak more highly of our local delegation. I did have a chance to speak in depth with Senator Kennedy as well as Representative Golden. Both are hopeful and confident that, at least from a school's perspective, by the end of the month, we'll receive more information. They're going to push their channels. They understand the urgency of that situation for us, which Ms. Turner will highlight within her presentation, but we can't commit to a plan for our community for school opening without having a way to fund that plan. The expense side is increasing. As you can kind of sense, I shared with you before, an air purifier for each classroom is an approximate cost of $1.2 million. Licenses for online learning is $200 per student, that's approximately $3 million if we chose to purchase licenses for all kids. And again, we could very well be there if there's a resurgence, have to be prepared. And then you remember from our last presentation, an estimate of $2.1 million for PPE. Those are all COVID-related expenses. Ms. Turner, I'll give you an update around what we know right now and what we have to be planful for going forward with our budget to move in a direction where we can open schools on time. And again, I want to take the opportunity to be annoyingly redundant. The calendar is at the disposal of the committee, and I have heard feedback from others that we should reconsider that calendar, and I'm, I'm open to those conversations. Community members, we have heard you that the calendar was developed during a very different time. So, Ms. Turner, I'm going to yield the floor to you. She'll run through. Committee members, this is not, yeah, if you could, because for the committee, this is not going to be new information, but it may very well be new information for many of our, the viewing community. Again, it's an opportunity for feedback, no action required. The one action we are going to ask Mr. Mayor is we need to set some additional meeting dates. We have no meeting dates on the, on the calendar. We have no meeting dates on the, on the calendar. You know, we have to notice, uh, in advance, uh, our budget hearings. I want to be optimistic that we can move towards an annual budget adoption at some point this month, which means we need to start noticing our hearing dates. We've gotta start getting together subcommittee dates, as well as, uh, special meeting dates. Both go hand in hand. You've gotta approve a plan. A plan requires you to have a funding, uh, source for it. This is the, yes, thank you. Ms. Turner?
The budget update includes, um, what we do and don't know about the FY21 revenue, important benchmarks, next steps, and recommendations. With FY21 revenue, Chapter 78, the, the state is still forecasting a $6 to $7 billion revenue shortfall and has not yet released any official information on the impact of that shortfall on local school districts. Governor Baker has authorized level funding for a 1/12 continuation budget for July and August. The Commissioner of Education has recommended for local districts to plan utilizing a level services plus assumption. However, the Commissioner has no authority to appropriate funds and has articulated that there is no assurance of any specific funding level. Level service funding still appears very unlikely. With grants, the federal title grant allocations totaling $7.2 million were released. Two of the four title grants were reduced and two were increased. The net effect is $27,000 more than last year. The CARES-ESR grant funds, the application for $4.1 million was submitted on June 30th. The mass COVID release, um, relief opportunities include funds for PP&amp;E, possibly $225 per student, which would equate to approximately $3 million, and possible reimbursement for technology purchases related to COVID, such as the Chromebook purchase that we did. Oh, the Chromebooks was, um, the Chromebook purchase was $2.4 million, plus some that we spent, um, previously with grants of approximately $300,000. So, um, the next slide is important budget and benchmarks. Staffing, on June 15th, that was the deadline for teacher layoff notices. July 20th is the deadline for layoff notices for LSAA. August 1st is the last date to lift the hiring freeze to prepare for school opening on September 2nd. Minimum time, we need a minimum time required to hire, reassign, and onboard staff. School reopening, August 1st, that's the release of the school reopening plan. September 2nd is the first day of school. Continuation month-to-month budget, June 8th, the school committee adopted the 1/12 budget for July. July 23rd, possibly consider a 1/12 budget for August to align with the city. We're hoping to, um, schedule that date. Maintain a 1/12 budget for the entire month of August could significantly compromise school opening. Adoption of an annual budget is needed by August 19th in order to cover salaries of 10-month employees who return to payroll in September.
Can I just, uh, jump in for one second? I thought we already agreed that we're accepting the 1/12 for August. So, why are we considering?
You did a, you did a 1/12 for July.
Right. And we said it was fine for August.
It could, it could work for August. It will compromise things to do that for a full 1/12. You haven't taken the full action item, the formal approval.
Okay.
And, uh, so, we can set that up for, uh, another meeting next week. We're actually suggesting that you hold off on that till the last possible date, because it does compromise, even make, even providing the appropriation in different ways could compromise, uh, different decisions in front of you.
Right. But didn't we, last night, we voted on the budget, and it's done.
For the city-
That was the whole deal that we were trying to work out before last night. So, last night, when the city adopted the budget, that's it, isn't it?
I don't believe so. I believe the school committee has to, you adopted an appropriation to the school committee. The school committee would have to adopt a, a budget itself.
Right, but there's, there's no other, there's no more money coming from the city. It's all done. We appropriated it. Isn't that my understanding?
The, the school committee would have to determine the expenditures within that appropriation. So, the expense side would have to be built out.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the school committee, the city council last night approved the 1/12 budget. So, that's it. You, you can't ask for any more money. You can use less than your 1/12, but you can't, you can't get any more money out of August, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Unless, in, during the course of this month, we get the annual appropriation for Chapter 70, which is a possibility, apparently. That, uh, what I'm hearing from our local delegation is that, uh, they have some confidence that by the end of this month, at least school districts, uh, will receive some type of projection or forecast because of some of those benchmarks, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, Ms. Turner just went through. So, yeah, both, yeah, you're accurate.
Okay, all right. Sorry, continue.
So, the next slide actually, um, shows why, why the 14.9 that the city council voted is sufficient for August. But, uh, to reflect how that changes month to month, the last three columns are July, August, and September. And all we put in there was the payroll rather than contracted services and, um, supplies, so that you could see the difference between July needing $5.6 million in salaries. August jumps up to seven, um, over $7.5 million in salaries, because different unions have different start dates. But if you wait till September, it goes, it jumps up to $16 million. So, right now, the 14.9 that the city approved for this, um, for August is sufficient to cover our expenses. If we had to go into September, it would not be. So, that, that slide five is showing that.
And I think that's the important highlight there, Mr. Mayor, which the committee will have to consider. If we start with a $14 million assumption, once we bring people back onto payroll, you're making a commitment of 10 months of employment where we couldn't hit payroll on that same baseline assumption. Some of that's the increased fixed costs that we know, difference between a level services and a level funded. And if you slide back, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you, just for that point of privilege that you, you provided, those staffing benchmark dates are important, which are different based on each employment contract. Your contracts, once those dates pass, obligates you then to scenarios, which you have to consider. You could bring people back on temporary employment. There's a real question whether we could recruit people in on only temporary offers to start a school year. Uh, might not be able to operationalize it while it sounds good on paper. Or then you're committing 10 months of payroll absent some pretty complex and nasty litigation that the committee may not want to risk. So, things do change with your August decisions. Even though you could afford August, you're really committing to some continuation dollars that would have to be considered. So, we're very, very hopeful, hence the calls out to our local delegation, that some type of annual numbers, at least for school districts, come forward. You're not the only one in this. The school districts around the Commonwealth are, but very different than municipalities.
Okay. Sure. Ms. Doherty?
I know we're running late. I just have a quick question regarding the, um, the start date to be able to lift the freeze, right? So, August 1 is the last day, last day, and I get that. That's a lot of hiring decisions that have to be made in a short time. What I wanna know is, have those positions been listed in the compendium? So that internally, our staff knows, we need a first grader at this school. We need a first-grade teacher at this school, or a fifth-
Yeah, so, Dr. Hall has, uh, definitely been working through internal moves. So, internal transfers are available. Uh, the one exception to that is, if you recall, back in March, whole different world. We had different scenarios that our school sites had gone through with their funding. So, anything that would have been additional funding, that, that hasn't actually even been approved by the school committee officially. So, there are some additional positions in there that schools may say, "Well, I'm not seeing that listed." That's a school site conversation, not yet a school committee approval. But the other ones that are in there, they have gone through the compendium process. Internal transfers are being accepted. We have some schools that have been quite industrious to try to recruit internal, internal candidates, because they know how the hiring freeze is working. But if you, uh, kinda think about it, it's all almost a jigsaw. Once one frees up, it, it may, and it's also, it's not necessarily, August 1 is a date just because of September 2. We think it requires a month span. The upside of this being a pandemic is that everybody's in it. So, you don't have a bunch of school districts doing a whole lot of recruitment. And, uh, it's, it's unfortunate for those people that are in an employment scenario right now, that there isn't a lot of hiring. But in our terms, we're not trying to, you know, speed through the process to make sure that we can recruit everybody's in this.
Joe, Mr. Yep, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a question for Ms. Turner on, on the Chromebooks, getting back to the Chromebooks. Any update on that order that, that we put in?
The anticipated shipment date would be at the end of July, they're hoping.
Thank you.
Sure, Ms. Turner?
So, the next steps include, the month of July, we would like to do a- Month of July, we would like to do a full cost analysis of expenses related to the school reopening plan. We would like to do weekly public presentations and discussions of that cost analysis with the school committee during finance subcommittee meetings, open, open budget hearings, or alternative forums to coincide with community forums on school opening. The adoption of an annual budget ahead of August 1, release of the final school opening plan is a goal, if we could. Recommendations, we wanna schedule a finance subcommittee meeting and special school committee meeting to discuss and approve the low public schools reopening plan for SY 2021. Possibly July 23rd, 5:30 finance subcommittee meeting, and a 6:30 special meeting of the school committee. This would be the time to consider the 1/12 budget for August 20th. And July 29th is another suggested date for a 5:30 finance subcommittee meeting and a 6:30 special meeting of the school committee.
So, if you look at that, these are just proposed dates. One, that's almost locked in. I hate to say it. Next week, we've got two nights where this committee is gonna be committed to graduation. So, that's the Thursday available. Hopefully, we don't have rain dates there. Uh, we tried to stay away from a Monday or Friday recommendation, but certainly, uh, we work at, at your pleasure. There's, uh, the next date, the 29th, we do have to approve the school, all of the three scenarios. So, that would be the hold there. The hope, fingers crossed, everybody in the room, please, is that we have some kind of annual budget forecast at that time, too. At which point, you may end up having to do a marathon meeting, but I think it would be, uh, extremely appreciated by everyone to get that one, a marathon meeting with the amount that we've been holding on to here with the budget discussion. So, those are the two dates. If the committee wants to do more, the only, I, that certainly is possible. I would highly recommend that we not do less. And the only catch that we have on the calendar are the graduation dates. I don't know committee members' dates. But, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you would prefer for us to poll committee members and then post accordingly?
Well, we're all right here. Why don't we just agree to meet?
I'm not sure if it's the last Wednesday of the month, which would be July 29. That would be my, I mean, it's too important a meeting to hold it when a member can't be here for a prior commitment. I'm okay with, with-
I mean, next week's forecast right now-
A bit.
Looks like thunderstorms. Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I just need a one more thing. I need one more thing.
So, thunderstorms for the high school graduation, is that-
Right now, the forecast is thunderstorms all day long.
Well, the weather always changes. I mean, I'm okay with, I'm okay with, with setting these dates, but I think-
Ronnie said she can do it.
Oh, she can? Okay.
Technology.
And the only, my only other question then is, I thought if it's a formalized budget hearing, you're supposed to give two weeks' notice-
Yeah, we need to-
-in the newspaper. So, that would have to be the 29th, not the 23rd, because it's obviously not two weeks out.
I think we're gonna have to do more, not fewer. I just wanted to put it, you're gonna have to do at least two.
Okay.
I do think we're gonna have to do more than two. Uh, if we can solidify these two, that would be great.
That's, that works for me, then.
I have really appreciated the flexibility of the committee. You're meeting far more than once a week at this point. We got another meeting tomorrow night, so.
And then my only other concern is, what are the chances that we're actually gonna get those numbers from Desi? Because how can we move forward without it?
I've pushed, what I can do, um, is to make sure that we advocate, that we inform. Our local delegation is well aware of the challenges that come to a school district. And what, um, both Senator Kennedy and Representative Golden have shared is that the full legislature is aware of the, of the, of the importance here-
For the whole state.
-of making sure it comes out. I, the variable is, is this, is, um, federal stimulus is seeming like a high likelihood.
Okay.
But nobody knows what date. And so, I think the state is largely waiting, because a significant infusion of federal dollars means a big difference in terms of what numbers they would be releasing. And now, there's high confidence it's gonna be released at some point, but nobody knows when. Nobody's been signaling when. So, my next call is gonna be to the Congresswoman's office, see if we can get it. And she, too, has also been highly supportive, highly visible, and highly responsive. So, as I get information, I'll share it out, but at this point, I think, committee members, you probably have as much information as I do it on that. And I've really appreciated the insight you shared. I think, Mr. Howie and I were comparing notes across, just, uh, so he was kind enough to put calls out, too, ahead of this meeting, just to see how much information we could get. So, I appreciate that, Mr. Howie.
Joe, Mr. Dillon?
I was just gonna say, I'm working on the 23rd, and so, I'm, you know, I'm gonna just continue to struggle with it.
I'll speak to Chief. You'll be awesome.
I appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Man, I should start complaining more. With these meetings, I would appreciate being, taking into consideration that, because every week, I don't know if it's Dr. Boyd or whoever has an excellent, um, has been on an excellent run of scheduling things when I'm working. And I, I do everything that I can. I, I took, I took, I took time off tonight to be here. So, you know, when, when we poll and we're looking for a quorum, well, if I say no, and the, you know, the rest of the committee says yes, well, I'm not gonna be at that meeting. So, as, I guess with just these couple at least, um, that'd be nice. I don't know. I'm gonna take care of these ones. I'm gonna be there, but-
No, we can work around your schedules, the same as anyone else's, and-
Yeah, it's tough, but I appreciate it.
Yeah. And we'll create a new job, fire watch for the meetings, so we'll have, usually, we have a policeman, we'll have a fireman, so.
There's, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll also throw something else out there. This is a very different time. It's, everybody stay at home. Everybody has different schedules. We typically look to evening hours, but I can also poll other hours. It's very different for our community right now. We use evening hours because of accessibility for the community, but everybody stay at home now. It's, it's a very different time. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if I should also poll some different times outside of evenings, but I would just put that on the table. Obviously, my work hours are the hours that you have for me, so, uh, I'll just put that out there as a possibility. I don't know if that helps, Mr. Dillon. I know you work unconventional hours. I'm trying to help, man. I'm trying to-
I would be available during the days, like, but not on the days of work, so. We're a 24-hour shift, so. Two of those a week, if you, you know, schedule a meeting on one of those, then-
Yeah.
Figure out how to, you know, either combinations for my other job or not.
I'm out of suggestions, so, Mr. Mayor, you gotta get him the time off here, man.
Well, we'll figure something out. It's-
I'm gonna make it to these next two. I'll do a few of that.
Yeah, it's getting late, so I can kinda picture you like, but I can picture you like Kramer on Seinfeld. You'd be holding the hose, putting a fire out, and holding your computer, trying to talk to us.
I have gone in that direction with my hair, so, I mean, I'm getting close, right?
I, could we do it earlier in the week? I mean, I know we get the graduation on the 21st and the 22nd, but what about the 20th? What's that, a Tuesday? Oh, you couldn't do it?
That's, um, that's this Monday.
Oh, it's a Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, this Monday. So, I don't know how much information we'll have to share.
Oh, I see. It's too soon. Okay.
We're trying to, we have a short runway. I just have five days. I don't have this much time.
Right, no, no, that would make no sense. Okay.
All right. That's a Monday, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll poll.
All right, I can do that. I can, I can take care of the polling tomorrow and moving forward on those. But thank you. Appreciate that. That, that concludes, uh, the presentation.
So, we on to recent, motion, report on motions, motion response?
Yes.
So, motion response to, uh, Mr. Howie's response. Superintendent produce a report by April 1st. See, missed that deadline.
No, this is a repeat. Mr. Howie requested a repeat.
Do you have any questions on this, Mr. Howie?
Yes, uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, to Billy Joe, thank you very much for this report. I have probably more questions than I have any comments. Uh, I'm gonna try to be as quick as I can, and I'll, I'll read a few things, and then I'll try to speed it up for you, Mayor. But, uh, one thing I wanna read is the total sped spending has increased from $22 million in, uh, 2011 to $43 million in 2019. Now, I appreciate the report going back. Right now, this report goes back like eight or nine years. I was hoping to look back 15 years, but this is beautiful, because I read it all. I do have a few questions. I might, I'll do one, one question. I won't do all four. But another thing I wanted to point out is, uh, sped out of district spending rose from $7.9- But another thing I wanted to point out is, sped out of district spending rose from 7.9 million in 2011 to 13 million in 2018. This amount decreased to 11 million, 11.8 million in 2019 due to the opening of the Janus 80-day school. So, this school committee, in the past one, I think we did a great thing by opening up that Janus 80 school. Now, with that all said, I, all this information that you gave me, I read it, and I just want to know why. Why did these numbers increase? I'm throwing it out there to someone like the superintendent or anybody here that works for us. Why is it increasing so fast? That, that's my problem. Some of my questions would be, like, for instance, why is there such a large increase in the percentage of total budget if there's only a 2% increase in the number of students who resp, who receive special education? And the last thing I'll read, and I'll be done, is, and I have a few more, but I'm going to just do this one. What expense categories are most responsible for the increase in sped budget from 15% to 22% of the total budget? Is it transportation rent, administrative salary and compensation, salary and compensation of people who directly work with children, materials? The increases for special ed to me just make me say, why? Why do they keep increasing so much? And I think when I throw something out like this to, to our staff, maybe we can get a few more answers down the road. But again, Billy Joe, thank you so much for this report. I know I am not asking enough questions. I'm being rushed, but that's okay.
Can I ask your questions, if you have a couple more?
Well, the last one is, I would want to know this. How do, how do these percentages compare with other districts in Middlesex County? Just, it's just something that, you know, special ed to me, I got, I don't want to say I got ripped off or beat by it, but I did. And that's history. I just want to make sure no other people get beat like I did.
I mean, looking at the report, like you said, if you don't mind if I jump in, I mean...
Yeah, go ahead.
I couldn't even, you know, 10 years ago, when I was sitting in your seat, the Judge Rothenberg Center, for example, you know, $100,000 per student. Now, some of the reports tonight, they're up to $233,000 per student.
For the correctur...
Insurance costs and everything.
To correctur, it's up to 330,000 per student.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
But that's okay. I'm just saying is, I think this report, and now, someone gave it to me, the idea to do this on the streets, and I, the person said, please don't say my name, and I said, I won't. But I think people that get involved in something like this and give a person a motion, like they did to me, and just, I still, I'm down to the point of why.
Yeah.
And someday, you can say that to me. You don't have to do it tonight, Mr. Superintendent.
No, it's expensive, but I mean, you can say, Mr. Superintendent, we're getting...
I appreciate it. I appreciate the work anyways on that. Thank you.
70% after 45%, right, reimbursement, but still...
There's, yeah, the out of district, the mayor called me, actually flabbergasted at some of the costs inside the permission to enter tonight. You know, it's, these costs are just something else when you start to look at them with the, you know, a new lens. There's, Ms. Desmond has assumed leadership of special education, and you've had a chance now to engage Mr. Lovato as our special education director. Mr. Howey, I'd like to be able to give that the time that it's due. It is a large cost item for you as a committee. Our special education department, it's also rather complex with all of the laws that surround it. I think you asked some extremely important questions, and if you're open to it, Ms. Desmond will work to have Mr. Lovato put together a response to that, that's in a form that the entire community can understand. And if you're open to it, Mr. Howey, Ms. Desmond will give you a call tomorrow or so on, to make sure she can understand fully from you all of those questions, to make sure they're all addressed for the full committee.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're all done? Where are we going now? It's the 64. Right, so we're all done?
Did the, so, Mr.?
So, now we're on the enrollment report?
And, Mr. Mayor, we went through the enrollment report. If you remember, when we went through the presentation, the one being your actuals versus your forecast, so you'll see if you back map those. Everything's just a grade off because that's your actual report of enrollment. Within the presentation, we had your forecasted enrollment. We'll continue to bring that to you because, obviously, enrollment is top of mind for everyone going into this next uncertainty period. So, Mr. Mayor, I would just suggest that the committee accept these as a report of progress, and that concludes my reports.
Yep, so I need a motion to accept the report, 61 through 64, as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr., I can't pick anymore. It's too long of a name. Mr. Dillon? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any questions, any, so, just one quick thing. Right now, it looks like it may rain every day next week. Is there, what's the worst-case scenario if it does?
There's no rain in here.
All right, I hope not, but...
Worst-case scenario, we're all going to the mayor's house, and he's hosting our graduates.
Let's pray for sunshine.
We have rain dates, but if it's every day next week, the rain dates are next week.
Right now, it's calling for rain every day.
Don't say, this, this graduating class has faced enough of God's wrath here, so...
Mayor?
Nonetheless, can I just thank the committee? This is a hard meeting, a long meeting. It might feel like not a lot of action, but this has been extremely important to get us to a place where you can take action. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, committee.
All right.
Mayor, one, I was going to use the end of the night to compliment you. I already did that earlier, but I would like to say congratulations to Ryan Dechino on receiving Student Athlete of the Month.